Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council. Mayor Teresa Tomlinson. City manager Isaiah Hughley. Pops Barnes, District 1. Glenn Davis, District 2. Bruce Huff, District 3. Evelyn Turner-Pew, Mayor Pro Tem and District 4. Mike Baker, District 5. Gary Allen, District 6. Mimi Woodson, District 7. Walker Garrett, District 8. Judy Thomas, Post 9 at Large Counselor. John House, Post 10 at Large Counselor. And City Attorney Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council.
Hello, everyone, and welcome to the November 27th meeting of the Columbus City Council. We're so glad to have you with us today. As you can see, maybe you can see, I have my voting sticker on. So don't forget, there's a runoff in the state of Georgia, and we have our polling station here at the City Services Center, open every day through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. So that's a little different than normal, 8:00 a.m. through 5:00 p.m. So come down and vote early. Of course, if you can't get here this week, you can vote at your home precinct on Tuesday from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. So it's our most precious right. Make sure that you exercise your right to vote. And with that, we're going to jump on into our agenda today. We've got some folks who are going to help us along. First, we have Dr. Shane Green of St. Paul United Methodist Church. Dr. Green is going to lead us in an invocation consistent with his faith tradition. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Appreciate the privilege of being with you this evening. If you would, please bow your heads with me. Well, God, as we pause this evening to ask your blessings, what we also want is to acknowledge your gifts to us. How unfortunate that we are quick to dismiss that we have received so much at the hands of so many, only to exchange for something that we think that we are entitled to. So forgive us for our shortsightedness. As we approach this season that is filled with merriment, gift-giving, and celebration, help us to see those around us who are hurting and in the throes of despair. Thankfully, we have been blessed to live in a country that has as its core belief the concept of freedom. As a country, freedom can't exist without those who serve to play the role that is needed to protect and to care for all persons. And so for our leaders here today, we pray for your blessings upon them, oh God. We pray for their life, their work, their families. Those with the responsibility to serve the public are seldom appreciated and often only hear what others think is wrong, and not for the day-to-day good that they help to ensure. So at this moment, oh God, I pray not just for your continued blessing upon our leaders, but for their resolve to play the part that is needed in aiding and helping our community. And so finally, oh God, we pray for all of our citizenry. Help us to be quick to help, to look for what we have in common and not what makes us different. Guide us as you guide them. We pray today in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Dr. Green, so very much, and thank you for what you and St. Paul United Methodist Church do for our community. We also have some special folks here today who are going to help lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. We have Faith Middle Schools National Junior Honor Society. And so we're so proud. You guys, come on up. Come on up here to the table. Tia Sh has a microphone for you. And if you all would stand and prepare for them to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a routine justice for all.
Excellent. Give them around. All right. Well, if you all would take just a minute, please, and introduce yourselves. Tell us your name and what grade you're in, or how old you are.
So I'd like to say thank you for this wonderful opportunity. I'm Emily Gorecki, President of our National Junior Honor Society Chapter. We're from Faith Middle School on Fort Benning.
I'm Emilia Ciccarello, Vice President of National Junior Honor Society from Faith Middle School. I am 13 years old and in 8th grade.
Hi, I'm Mackenzie Allen, and I am 13, and I'm in the 7th grade, and I go to Faith Middle School.
I'm Lissa Harris, and I'm the Treasurer of NJHS. And I'm in 8th grade, and I'm 14 years old.
I'm Reed. I'm Secretary of NJHS, and I'm 13, and I'm in 8th grade.
I'm Maya Ciccarello. I'm 12 years old, and I'm in the 7th grade.
I'm Zachary Monzano. I'm 14, and I'm in the 8th grade.
I'm Nate Miller. I'm 12, and I'm in 7th grade.
I'm Livia Washington. I'm 12, and I'm in 7th grade.
I am Brianna Hotson. I'm 13, and I'm in 7th grade.
Fantastic. And I see you've got some folks here with you. If you're a parent or supporter, teacher, stand up, please, and let us recognize you. All right. Well, thank you, guys, very much, and congratulations on your achievement. We're so proud of you and look forward to hearing great things in the future. So keep up the good work, and hopefully, we can have you back here again soon. Thank you. All right. We've got minutes from the October 30th, 2018 executive session and the November 13th council meeting. We've got a motion for the Mayor Pro Tem to be received, and a second. Were there any corrections, edits of any sort? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
All right. And we will head in then to the City Attorney's Agenda.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. First item up, this is a continuation of an appeal requesting a sign variance at 6801 Flat Rock Road. JMC Flat Rock Partners is the applicant. Mr. Whitman is here again. If there are any questions around the table for him. We do have Chairman of Board of Zoning Appeals, Mr. Harrison, is here. And I think Planning Department is in the back. Any questions?
Not at this time.
Everybody should have the information on what was requested about the size of the sign and the height in their package. Did you want to say anything, Mr. Whitman?
Not unless y'all have any questions.
We have Counselor Allen.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to let council know, I did have one call that voiced an opinion about this signage. And I talked to Mr. Whitman before the council meeting, and he explained, if you might want to walk through it again, just so we have an understanding of where the signs will be located and what you're trying to avoid by having additional signs on there. My thought was that instead of having multiple signage from all the stores that will eventually locate here on 80, or attempt to be on 80, we would just have two structures and have several signs located there. Then there will be some internal signage that would be directional to whatever business it is. It just seemed to make sense to me to limit it to two signs. So have I explained that right?
Yes, yes, sir. My name is Chris Whitman, Park Drive, Columbus, Georgia. Work with Flory Calhoun Realtors and is a member of JMC Flat Rock Partners, the owner of the property located at 6801 Flat Rock Road. And yes, we did come in to make a variance to the overlay district for this particular area. And we are requesting two signs to be erected on the property fronting JR Allen Parkway. And we have requested that the first sign be located at the main entrance of Flat Rock Road, which is essentially an existing intersection now. It's already controlled by a light. And then the second pylon sign, also being 30-foot in height, would be located at the last entrance into the development, which would be located almost as you enter into the gateway intersection. So it'd be pretty close to that. There would be a substantial distance in between the two locations. The reason that we're requesting two signs is that this is an 88-acre development, and we're going to have approximately 75 to 100 different tenants located within the development. And some of the more major tenants, in the way that they negotiate now, demand that they have so much space on the sign, and that the signs are limited to the number of people located on the sign. So thus, the request for two. We've also requested two interior signs. These would actually be interior, would probably not have a lot of visibility from JR Allen Parkway, but because the overlay district does enter into the property 750 feet from the center line of JR Allen Parkway, that we're requesting two, more or less directional, informational, and tenant signs. What we're going to do is make them digital signs, so the copy will change regularly. And they'll be about six-foot high on the digital sign, about six-foot high by about three-feet wide, and they'll be located in the two roundabouts. So they will be four-sided. So you'll be able to see them on all four sides in the roundabout, and as the approaches to the roundabout.
We've got Counselor Thomas.
At some point, I would like for Mr. Harrison with the BZA, if he has anything to tell us about what the zoning appeals boards thinking was and so forth.
Right. Okay. So as the board, what we're in charge of is they have to show us a hardship. So what is your hardship to needing a sign that's 30, 35, 40 feet, whatever it was, to that property that has to go above and beyond the overlay district? And the board looked at it and didn't see a hardship in the presentation. So I know that, you know, they say that it's 88 acres, and it is. But the board looked at it and said, well, Columbus Park Crossings, 300-something acres, and they don't have huge signs all over the place. They have smaller signs that, and everybody finds everything through there perfectly. So as the board, they sit there, and that's what they deemed, that they thought was fair, to have maybe smaller signs. And that was the vote, because we just, we didn't find a hardship. You know, if you don't have a 40-foot sign, people are still going to get there, is what the board was seeking. And our other thought is the city spent a lot of time and effort on the overlay district. So if we're going to spend all that time and effort to do it, and then every single time somebody comes up and just wants it, to deem it, why have the overlay district? Why spend all the time and effort to do it if you just are able to go in there and put it up anyway? So we felt also obligated to the citizens that if we're going to do that, let it be y'all's call. You know, let y'all overrule the overlay, and y'all take the heat for it, not us. So that was also the other thought behind that, is if the city has spent that much time and effort to have an overlay, let y'all make the final call. So that's where we came from.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison.
Yes, ma'am.
We have Counselor Huff.
Quick question. Based on the size of the signs that are being requested?
Right.
What's the closest signs in town to that size that we see every day?
That is requested? I don't know. Chris, you know another sign?
The public sign across the street would be actually in excess of that height. The sign in front of the Ozarks.
Would you come to the mic?
Sure. The public sign across the street here on the Makin Road Publix is actually more significantly larger than that. The Bank of the Ozarks sign up there at North Lake is significant in size, is probably larger than this sign. I believe the sign at Bradley Park Drive and the Publix there is also of equal size and stature, is the sign that we're requesting.
So we have them in town, it just didn't fit the overlay?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. That, let's see, we've got Counselor Baker.
Mr. Whitman, was the variance for both the interior and exterior, or just the two pylons?
No, sir. It's for the interior and the exterior.
Okay.
Both of them, because of the distance that the overlay district goes into the property, the overlay district says that any sign within that boundary can only be six feet high and no more than 48 square feet.
And so what's the dimensions of the interior signs?
is seven-foot-three wide by 18 feet tall.
Okay, so it's close. Okay. Yeah, I mean, I really don't have a problem with the interior signage. I mean, to help people get around, that makes sense. I do see the reasoning behind the big exterior signs.
Yes.
And I realize you're here just because a potential tenant said, this is what we like.
Yes, and to address the hardship issue, and to the extent that it is a hardship, the plan in the interior, the middle section of that, is an actual, it's a lifestyle center. And unlike the typical storefronts that you see up at Columbus Park Crossing, when you go down the road, everybody can see the signs that are up on the storefront. This is going to be a park and walk. You're going to actually walk into the interior, and there will not be the storefront location to actually advertise a store's location. Most of the advertising is actually going to be interior, as we anticipate, and most of the people are going to get out of their cars and walk. But on the same token, this is a regional shopping center. It's not a neighborhood shopping center, and we're anticipating drawing from people well outside of the community.
But in this day and age, when most people go out there, they already know where they're going. You know, it may help once they get inside the development, but they'll already, I don't know how many people are going to look at that big sign wondering what's in your place. If I'm going out there, I'm already going to know what's there, what I'm looking for, in this day and age. I mean, you'll know.
You might be, but you know, if you take the, for example, the soccer tournaments, for instance, that happen out there at, right around the corner at the Woodford Farm Soccer Complex, they bring in thousands of families in there to a soccer tournament, and they may be interested in going out and patronizing one of the establishments out there. And without knowing, as you're driving down JR Allen Parkway at 45 miles an hour, it may not be the easiest thing to say, oh, well, it's in there. So signage does help, and the tenants that I speak to on a very daily basis say that the best form of advertising that they have is signage on the road. And it's not as much as identifying the space in here because you have an impulse need, but it's that brand identity of knowing where that particular store is at any given time, and when you have the need for that particular service or those particular items, that you know where it is.
And who maintains it, the signage?
The actual owner of the shopping centers will maintain the signs. And right now, we plan on maintaining an ownership in the majority of it. We're not going to own everything out there. A lot of the out parcels are going to be sold off and sold to individual users, and they'll address their own needs. But as far as the shopping centers, the lifestyle center, and those type items, I think that we intend on maintaining ownership of it.
Because we do see some of the larger sign complexes that have the panels are cracked, the lights are out. You know, they're not maintained. Not that you would do that, but
Sure.
I do see an issue sometimes with the larger signs around. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have Counselor Garrett.
I think Mr. Harrison made a very good point that his committee is there to determine if the rules are met. But that's just a backstop. We have the power as council to overrule their decision when we see it necessary, and here, to me, this is basic economics. They're not going to invest this money in a larger sign unless they think it's going to have a financial return, and a financial return means more tax money for our citizens. So I think this is a place where we do need to step in.
All right. There seems to be no discussion at this time.
Okay, no other questions? We've got a hand in the audience. We want to give them your name and address.
Yes, sir. My name is Paul Olson, and I live at 13830 Yupitoy Lane. Garrett, I like what you said, the financial, economic impact. Am I not mistaken, this is the TAD? Is this the tax allocation district? Or is it, or is it not? This 80 acres? Can somebody say yes or no?
I think it is, yes.
Yeah, it is. And in my understanding, when you guys were pushing the TAD, and I had a debate with you, Teresa, in the past, and the first one lost. And the thing is, is that the TAD was designed for economic areas of distress. And my God, that's not, that doesn't fit the bill in that respect. They're asking all kinds of caveats, conditions, and terms in the respect of, well, we need more signage, when in reality, what you're doing is you're creating a legal precedent, so that when you make an exception for them, and you've got to understand, Garrett, that when you give them 20 years of tax exemption, and they're competing against, like, let's say, Columbus Square Mall, not with Columbus Square Mall, but Peachtree Mall, basically, you're putting them at a tax advantage, and they don't pay taxes for 20 years. So you're going to give them even more an advantage, and then other entities, other enterprises, will want to have the same thing. I think Glenn, at one time, you know, you have your Hilton Garden Inn back there, and they made a variance in that respect there, but not to the scope of what they're talking about as far as size. And the thing is, is I think that you guys could really, should look at the, let's say, the parity and the equality out there, and the legal precedent that when you actually allow this to happen, other people are watching it tonight, they're going to say, well, what about us? Especially when they get a tax advantage where they're now paying no property taxes for the next 20 years. And, you know, three years from now, we could be in the Great Depression. You saw how the Dow Jones dropped automatically 1,000 points in a matter of two days. Well, guess what? When Americans keep spending like there's no tomorrow, and they are over-leveraged in their credit cards, we're only a few steps away from being in the Great Depression because of the situation we're in. So be careful what you guys keep on giving as far as subsidizing certain enterprises over others in the competing levels, because honestly, you're giving them a tax advantage over other competing businesses, including mine. Okay? Thank you very much. Have a good day.
One more point, Mayor, and somebody else might want to jump in. But this is not a TAD project where council is approving the financing of this particular project as a formal TAD project.
What was it?
I thought he was saying it was in the TAD district.
It's, part of it is in the TAD district.
Okay.
Well, did you not vote on giving that to TAD district, if I'm not mistaken?
It's an approved TAD district. Hold on a minute, maybe the city manager can explain. Anyway, Mr. City Manager, did you want to comment?
Well, Madam Mayor, it is in a TAD. But I think that some misinformation has been provided in terms of 20 years of tax abatement or tax relief. That is not the way a TAD works. The way a TAD works is that they still pay taxes, but the increment goes into what we call the TAD account, if you will, that can be used for infrastructure and other things to improve the area. But the businesses out there will pay, you do pay taxes in a TAD. You don't get tax abatement for 20 years. It's just a manner in which the increment, the growth in the defined area, that tax increment that you receive during the period of the TAD can go for infrastructure projects and other things. Taxes are still being paid.
So City Manager, is it equivalent, is it equivalent to somebody else out there that has a commercial business?
Yes.
It is? And they're paying the same tax, and so it's going into an escrow?
Exactly.
In a sense.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah? And equivalent to anybody else incrementally going up each and every year? Or every three years?
Well, you can say, and I don't mean to get into a back-and-forth with it.
Sure, no, no. I'm just asking questions.
That is not what, you know, the increment, the increase that you, in other words, if that area is receiving, let's say, the boundary of the TAD is receiving $5 million today, and once you declare it a TAD, they are paying taxes, and let's say now, because of the growth, the taxes in that same area is $7 million. Well, the city will continue to use the $5 million as we've used in the past, and the $2 million can be used for infrastructure-type things that would have to come back through this council for them to approve the use of the growth in taxes in that defined area.
Okay. Because the Tax Assessor's Office has failed miserably in the past? Like, for my own personal example, because they knew that they were going to do eminent domain for 20 years, they did not increase on my commercial property, and then just incrementally went up $5,000 when they really went during their business. Let me just say this, is that they should actually go up every three years incrementally, because of pure fact that most properties, commercial properties, increase in value every three years. And so it should be addressed in that respect.
Well, and when you say they failed miserably?
Yes.
You're saying things, Mr. Olson, that, you know, I don't know what you mean when you say they failed miserably.
I think we covered that last year with Tyler Technologies.
But, and so I'm not going to get into a back-and-forth on that.
Thank you very much. You have a good night.
Yeah.
All right. Counselor Thomas, did you have a question?
I want to make sure that Mr. Olson understands what we're talking about here. What we did as a council was we said, this piece of property can, is a TAD district. And investors can bring projects to this council for this council to approve that project that will get some kind of a tax advantage because of that. This project that we're talking about tonight is in no way a TAD project. They will pay the same taxes that anybody else will pay, no matter where they are located in the city of Columbus. So this doesn't have anything to do with a TAD project. And the investor will pay the same taxes as if he had built this, this project anywhere else in town that is not in a TAD district. Two entirely separate, different things. And I want to make sure that people understand that we are not giving any kind of a tax break to this investor because of this. The only question before us tonight is, shall we give him a break on the size of his sign? That's it. And we are not doing a TAD project.
All right. Anyone else like to be heard on this? It's a public hearing. If there's no further comment, I'll entertain a motion to approve. All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, you may record your votes electronically. All right, and it does pass.
Okay, that variance has been granted, and we will give a copy of an approval resolution to the clerk on that, Mayor. The second item we have listed is a resolution that would ratify the approval of the bond resolution adopted yesterday by the Columbus Building Authority. This is a formality with respect to the $7 million we previously discussed for Courthouse and South Commons renovations. And I know Ms. Alexander is here with some folks from Davenport, and she can introduce everybody that is going to say something with respect to this item. Ms. Alexander?
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Good evening, council, Madam Mayor, Mr. City Manager. Back on October 30, the council gave us the approval to proceed with the issuance of $7 million in lease revenue bonds through the Columbus Building Authority. On October 31, the city utilized Davenport to send out the RFP for proposal for those bonds to local, regional, and national banking institutions. The results of the RFP came back and was actually shared with the Columbus Building Authority at our board meeting on yesterday. And so we have Courtney Rogers here, Senior Vice President of Davenport and Company. Many of you have seen his face before. But he's here tonight to sort of give a brief overview of the results of the RFP. It's the same presentation that was given yesterday to the Columbus Building Authority. So I'd like to call forward Mr. Courtney Rogers. So I'd like to call forward Mr. Courtney Rogers.
Thank you, thank you. Madam Mayor, members of council, great to be in front of you again. As Ms. Alexander said, we, the RFPs went out, we gave the banks a couple of weeks, which we typically do, and decided to say that we actually got 11 different bids in that are summarized here at the bottom of page one. And I think, you know, that is a, a strong number. We typically might see four to six for a project like this, and I think this speaks to the strength and the credit that they saw here with Columbus, as well as the end of the year. We typically see the banks being a little hungrier as they're trying to finalize their, their year-end. We have three different options that came back. The first column shows a prepayment option with no restrictions, and you could prepay it at any time, so no penalty. The middle column has prepayment options where there were some restrictions, such as prepayment penalties, and then the final, were basically no prepayment ability. With, I know the presentation that Ms. Alexander made some time ago basically indicated that we were going to look for prepayment options. We know that you've got some other decisions to make with regard to the government center down the road that would give us some flexibility to possibly refinance these bonds if we needed to, to restructure them, to maybe extend them a little longer. These are going to be 10-year bonds, so that we're amortizing the principal over 10 years, but if we decided we needed to, for cash flow purposes, extend them out and refinance them, we would have that ability with the prepayment. If council feels like that that is not something you'd like, we can do the other option, which is a 318 option from the same bank, Regions Bank, who is the lowest bid in both cases. What they did was a prepayment option where the first year, it would be 5% of whatever we were repaying, second year, 4%, and it declines to zero at year five, after year five. So those are really the two options, but knowing that it had been presented to you before as, that we would be able to come back to you with no, no penalties or no restrictions, the 333 is what we've highlighted here. Just to give you a sense, over 10 years, we're talking about a difference of $63,000 of total interest. That's the difference between a 333 rate and a 318 rate. So we, yesterday, the building authority went with our recommendation of the 333, but if you desire to go with the lower rate, we could still do that. Page two outlines the summary of that proposal, which is, the amount would be not to exceed $7 million, the rate is a 333. Again, it's prepayable in whole or in part at any time with basically five days' business notice. They have a bank fee of up to $10,000 for their council. It's very typical to have credit approval done after the approval by the local government, and that's what we see here. The close by, we originally, we're looking to close by the 27th, but after discussions with the authority yesterday and with the bank, we're actually going to push that up and try to get it closed before the holidays, trying to close that on the 20th of December. Page three, in terms of the debt service, we're looking at roughly about $835,000 per year. Again, that's over 10 years. You can see that there in the middle of the page. Once we have all of the cost of issuance included in there, the total cost of, it's at 3.64% once you add in the cost of issuance. So again, our rationale and recommendation on page four is to take the 333. That is the lowest rate among all the options with flexible prepayment terms. It allows for us to prepay it at any time without penalty prior to maturity. The interest rate is fixed. That is very important. It is not flexible. It's not going to move around. It's already locked in, no matter what interest rates do. Closing costs are very minimal, and then the, again, the interest rate is fixed, not only between now and closing, but between now and the final maturity. In terms of what's left, at this point, with your approval tonight, they'll file for bond validation. These bonds have to be validated. We expect that to come back the week of the 17th, and as I mentioned, we are going to close a couple of days after validation at this point and have this done before the end of the year. So Madam Mayor, I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone might have.
All right. Thank you for that overview, and we very much appreciate you being here. Does anyone have any questions? Courtney? Counselor Davis?
I set a curiosity on the prepayment option with some restrictions. What, what would those restrictions be?
So in the case of Regions, if we were to prepay it within the first year, they would charge a penalty of 5% on the dollar amount that's prepaid, and then it declines by 1% each year thereafter. So it goes 5, 4, 3, 2, 1. So after the fifth year, it's basically, you can call it at any time without penalty.
5, 4, 3, 2, 1. Good. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? All right. It looks like there's no further discussion, no further questions.
Okay, need to get a vote on this item.
Is there a motion for approval?
No.
Okay, we've got a motion, and it's the second. Any further discussion? All right, you may record your votes electronically.
Is this for Regions?
Is this for Regions, approving Regions? Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. Okay, and it does pass.
Okay, that has been ratified and approved. The only other thing, Mayor, we need a short executive session related to courthouse security plans. That's, that's all we have.
Okay. Counselor Barnes, did you have something before we go in?
No, I don't. I'm sorry, no.
Oh, okay, great. All right, we will move into the public agenda then. And, hold on a second, why pull that up? We want to first welcome Mr. Dave Erickson, who wants to speak to us about city procedures. Hello, if you would just state your name and your address, please.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes.
My name is Dave Erickson. I live at 324 Otter Drive in Catala, Georgia. I am an active business owner in Columbus. I run a number of different businesses in Columbus, most prominently Greyhawk Homes, which I'm proud to say my staff and I have built collectively 3,000 houses in the city of Columbus, added $500 million to the tax base of Columbus, which contributes over $9.5 million per year to the tax base of Columbus. I'm here because we have a problem. You, the city of Columbus, and myself, collectively, we have a problem. I'm in the product delivery business. I build houses, I build residential communities for the people of Columbus and the region beyond that as well. You, city of Columbus, are in the, in the service support business. You provide for the health, safety, and common good of the people of Columbus through your services and your administration. As I speak to you today, the city council of Columbus, you are also, in my opinion, effectively the Board of Directors for the city of Columbus, providing the major services that are for Columbus, and many of those services are not working well. Arguably, I think they're starting to fail. The good ship Columbus has many leaks. It's time to address those problems and put them to rest. We need to stop patching problems one at a time and look at how we do an overall comprehensive review and correction to some of the things I'm going to illustrate for you. Let me not be mistaken, there are many things in Columbus that are working very well. Fire Department, Police Department, Health Services, traffic, traffic light systems, there are many systems throughout Columbus that are working quite well. So this is not a carte blanche about the city, but there are specific problems that we must address. I've spoken to many of you individually from time to time about most of these same items, but collectively, I do not see any attention to them, I do not see any action, and we need to move, we need to solve some problems. Thus, I come to you publicly to discuss these, present them before you, and hope and pray that we will take some action to address them. We need to kick, stop kicking problems down the road and start taking action, because in many cases, your problems are my problems. We have a problem. I'm not here to pick a fight, but I must provide illustrations in order to provide clarity to my point. Many of these examples are not mine exclusively. Many other builders, contractors in general, and business owners across the city have the same observations. So I hope, in general, I'm speaking for many people, not just myself, and I hope my words will be received as such. Let me start with the most simple step in the building process, getting a residential permit. If you looked back a year ago, getting a residential permit in Columbus, relatively simple paperwork, takes two to three days to receive that permit. Good on them. Today, 15 to 30 days is the norm. I ran a report of everything we had permitted in the last 90 days. The average, average is around 15 to 20, and I have several of them in excess of 30 days. Subdivision approvals, engineering approval process to build a subdivision. Historically, this is done in two cycles, usually about 30 days each. Takes a little time, a lot of complications in there. Those days are gone. We no longer can do that consistently. My engineering friends tell me, effectively, the left hand and the right hand are not communicating. There's no central control process for getting plans through the various hands to get approval, and heaven help you if you run into environmental considerations, because everybody steps back, takes a deep breath, thinks about it for a number of weeks or months, and then will come up with an answer what we're going to do. Other cities who are much more active than Columbus use entirely different systems with great success. It might be time to look at those processes and consider a different path. If you get a subdivision completed, the lot plating process has its own problems. It's relatively convoluted, it requires input from a multiple range of different offices, it's often inconsistently managed, and there are technical decisions that must be made along the way, which are, which are often done somewhat arbitrarily on a case-by-case basis, making it very difficult to predict a path to get it done in a timely, effective manner. And heaven help you if somebody in that process is on vacation, because if they're on vacation, I got a beeper right here. If, if they're on vacation, the process will stop at that desk, and it will not move until that person returns. If they're on extended medical leave, you better start pumping, pumping a whole lot of phones to get that thing going, because there's no cross-support in signature processes for plats. Addresses, I know are certainly an issue. I have bent several ears in this room trying to get addresses for plats. The system is not getting better. It is now addressed over two different offices, both have GIS functions, and both of them are not working. A simple three-lot replat on an existing street should be pretty easy to do. I have one before your staff today that is now 73 days running, and we still don't have permits. I can't get permits without addresses. I'm ready to go. I've got customers who want to build houses there. I can't go, because I can't get addresses. I would also highlight here, in many cases here, I'm arguing for my constituents, my customers. My customers are your customers, and they want to build a house. They want a house in that spot, and they would like to have it now while interest rates are favorable. I'd also like to point out that in most all cases, I believe, we are paying good fees to cover these services. This is not a drain on the city, city revenue processes or tax base. We are paying fees to get these done, but it is not working well. Most aggrieving, aggrieving of all, many of these departments, if you phone to find out what the problem is, how you can shake it free and get it going, you won't get a phone call, ever. If you send an email requesting a similar thing, similar response. I'm not the only person with this observation. I checked with three other builders today, they all had the same basic observations. No matter the cause, we have a problem. Adding insult to injury, the permit volume in Columbus right now is running roughly one-third of what it did 12 years ago. Things are more complicated, I don't doubt that at all, but it's not three times as complicated as it was 12 years ago. We have a problem. Outside of the building and development industry, the tax office has its own issues. The biggest one I see is a pervasive problem of homes that are tax-frozen with owners who have long been dead. I know of at least four houses in Columbus right now where people have been dead for at least 10 years, and that house is still frozen. Nobody's looking for it. The court system has its own challenges. You personally addressed the office capacity of courts recently. That's, that's a challenge. Victim notification is supposed to be a common thing there. Doesn't work so great. I was through that process recently. Additionally, the variance process is somewhat inconsistent, depends upon the people you appoint to it and the guidance that you give them. Inconsistencies of variance is not good, because I can't go to a customer and have a reasonable outcome of where I think it's going to go, because I don't know for sure what it is. It depends on the makeup of the people who are, one, on the board, and, two, happen to show up for that meeting. More guidance, more consistency, more determination of what to be done is important. You set that agenda. Bottom line, we have a problem. We have a problem with consistent procedures, we have a problem with internal communications between departments, which relates back to the consistent procedures. We have a problem with accountability, not just with the budgets of a department, but the performance of the department, and what the outcome of those departments are doing on a daily and weekly basis. Finally, we have a problem with process and staff protocol. Who's in charge of what, when, and how it's supposed to get done? In some cases, this problem of discipline goes all the way to the top, right here in this room. When senior leadership, the Board of Directors regularly bypasses the city processes and staff to solve a problem the way they want it solved, that's not good. Separately, when a department head is allowed to go to another department head and tell them, "Don't do something," preventing the second department head from doing their job, that's a problem, especially when it's not transparent. When you go back to the first department head and say, "Why did he do that?" "No, I didn't do that." That's a bigger problem, because somebody's lying. I've been through that process recently. Silent injustice is the most insidious injustice of all. The simple denial of a permit or needless delay is a clear injustice. Injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. Those are not my words. Martin Luther King. A simple city process applies just as much as a civil rights process. Again, I'm not here to pick a fight. I'm here to help you, I want to find a problem, and I want to identify it, and I'd like to help you address solutions. We need to solve this problem. The solutions will, will come in a simple form, leadership. Somebody has to take charge and say, "We're going to solve this problem together." Red McDenney used to sit over here. He was brilliantly eloquent in his Southern style. He'd see something he didn't like, he'd bring it up, he'd paraphrase it, he'd look whoever it was straight in the eye and say, "That ain't right. We need to fix that." Somehow or other, it got fixed real quick. I challenge you to try to take the same approach.
Okay, Mr. Erickson, that exceeds your time. Thank you so much for your comments today, and what we can do, I mean, that was a lot of, you know, broad brush and serious accusations there. What we need are specifics, and so it might be well-served to ask the city auditor, that's why we have them. You're going to have to be specific about the permit that was denied for false reasons and all of this business that results in injustice. You know, those are legal claims. I don't know of any legal claims that have been made, and I don't know of any specific things about which you're talking about. I know a lot of times, there's a lot of acrimony involving your particular projects, because they usually are in greenfields and things of that nature, and citizens get upset about it, and you've been hearing innumerable times as we debate about zonings and water runoffs and all kinds of things. It's just a business that can be controversial, as you know, and of course, our various departments have to run oversight of that, not just of yours, but everyone else's, because when there are houses built that flood continually because the water runoff was not, you know, accurately or thoroughly taken into consideration, they come here wanting relief, because whether it's you or some other entity, they, they claim they can't get relief, and so they come to the government, which really can't provide them that relief. And so we have frustrated citizens that have put all of their financial worth into a house that's not resellable. So communities, municipalities, and counties around the state have to have regulations and processes, as you well know. If your contention is that there's something systemic wrong, then I think that those complaints need to be provided with great specificity so each one can be investigated and, and returned to council with what happened. Because we, we have people who are unhappy with particular things, but we do not receive a flood of calls or complaints that the system is broken. We have people who, who wanted this, you know, cut, a parking lot cut, and... who wanted this, you know, cut, a parking lot cut, and that, you know, thing done, but there's reasons why it was denied. And so we can look at that, but it's going to have to be, look at every complaint. And if those complaints are similar and result in, you know, there being delays and so forth, then we're happy to make those adjustments to any such systemic concerns. But, Naveen, I appreciate it, and I would recommend that we consider having the internal auditor run down these three people who say this and the two people who say that, because that's the kind of specificity we need and the citizens frankly demand. Let's see. Counselor Allen.
I'm sorry, Mayor. My computer bumped it.
What's that?
My computer bumped it. I was moving it around.
Oh, oh, okay. I'm sorry. Let's see here. Counselor Garrett.
Madam Mayor, actually, I've already talked to Mr. Erickson. I've already got the auditors to look into the issues.
Okay, but the way that works, and I appreciate that, council has to approve it.
Okay.
Because I want to put the, I don't want to put the auditor in a bad place.
Sure.
And I know you don't either.
I think they were actually talking with him first.
Yeah.
To get his input before they brought the council.
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, again, the way the charter works, it's supposed to come here and not to the individual department head or the auditor, because when the auditor was first created, there was a lot of concern about, you know, individual mayor or an individual counselor going and using the auditor for various reasons, so it has to come back here. So that would be my proposal, is that council consider letting the auditor look into this and chase it down, because otherwise, it's just, you know, it's not fair. It takes too long. People go on vacation. I never get a permit. I mean, that sounds bad, but let's run it down and see what really happened there.
Do we need a motion to that effect?
Okay.
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Second? All right. All those, any discussion? Mr. City Manager, do you want to speak to the, I mean, I know you, obviously, you're going to have a lot to say, so if you want to.
Well, no, I don't have a lot to say, but I will say, I think you're right. Hit it in the right direction with asking the auditor to take a look, because facts matter. And that's what I'd like to have, the facts.
Okay.
And, but I was going to suggest even before the motion was made that, and I tried to take notes, and certainly we'll go back and pull the notes from the video, but I was going to say that a good start would be to have an overview provided for council and the public from the person who heads the development departments, and that would be Deputy City Manager Pam Hodge. She could come and lay out how the process works and provide certain stats about how many we've received and the average number of days and so forth, and those that have been issues or concerns and why they are, we've had issues or concerns. And so we can certainly come back and share with this council and the public so that they know how our process works.
Yeah.
For residential or subdivision approvals and so forth, so on. I think that's important, because when you have someone to come and drop all of these things on you, and there's certainly a lot of things that were said, and then just walk out, it leaves a cloud. And certainly, I'd like to clear it up, and one great way to do it is exactly the direction you're going, but I'd like to just have my person come back and provide some overview.
Yeah, and do also, I think it's important, the statement about there being less building permits today than there were twelve years ago, because we're actually up in permits, but of course, twelve years ago was 2006, which was the housing boom that led to the Great Depression.
Exactly.
Or recession, I should say, and of course resulted in a national seismic decrease in building permits in Columbus as well. But, so I'd like to see the, you know, that information.
In the meantime, we will certainly, I'm going to go ahead and have my people to provide an update, but I would love for the auditor to pursue it, because facts matter.
Yeah. Okay. Let's see. We've got Counselor Thomas.
Mr. City Manager, one of the requests that I would make is that before we have this kind of presentation, that I know that Deputy City Manager Hodge and the other department heads would work very closely with the auditor if the auditor had questions. I don't have enough information, and I'm not sure that I would continue to have enough information if we just got a statistical report or whatever from the departments. So my request would be for the, and I'm not trying to tell the auditor how to do the audit, but for him to work with these folks and to come back with one big report, if you will, and not do it sort of piecemeal, so that we will have not only what the problem is as outlined by Mr. Erickson and others, but what we see as solutions for some of these or whatever. So that would be my request.
So you would like to, for me, to delay coming back until they get together and bring, come back?
Yes, I think so.
That's right.
It would just help me.
Sure. I get you.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Let's see. We've got Counselor Woodson.
Yes. City Manager, can you also add to that process on the licenses, too, because I had two situations where I had a complaint about us taking so long in offering a license to a business, and it turned out to be it wasn't us. It was the Health Department that was holding it up. Once we figured out what the problem was, the business came in the next day and got their, you know, got our portion of the license, but they had to wait on the Health Department. And sometimes people think that it's us holding it up when the process is not our end. It's either another entity that has to approve it at the state level or at the Health Department area. Since we're going to do that, I wish we also add that to it, so that way we can educate the public on the whole process. Because like I said, I had two businesses like that, and once we went into details, we found out it wasn't the city at all. It was the Health Department and the state level that they were waiting on and not us.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right. We have Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Mayor. And just listening to Mr. Erickson, I think.
I'm sorry. It turned you off. Can you hit Counselor Davis again? There you go. Sorry.
Thank you. And listening to Mr. Erickson, I think it's real simple. What he's talking about is customer service. And when you really get down to it, and I've had some conversations with the incoming administration, I think this is one of their concerns, is overall it's customer service. I think they're going to be keeping a, the new administration is going to be keeping a close eye on that from that standpoint. I don't, I don't look at this as being overly complicated. It's just, it's just dealing with the process of development, whether you're a residential developer or a commercial developer or whatever. You go through a process. It's the same process for everybody. So it sounds to me like what the auditor needs to do is just go and do a performance audit or discovery audit and just look and just understand the process, if it's working or not, or if there's a breakdown, or if it's just, if it's an individual thing or periodic type of matter or whatever, but just review the whole process, because it's pretty simple in the process of steps that you go through. I think Mr. Erickson outlined them in between, in between his words and his conversation, what he's laying out to us. So I don't see that as being a major challenge from a standpoint of looking in and just looking to see if the process is right. I think you got to look, I think an auditor would talk to both sides and try to understand a little bit better and to see if it's just an isolated matter. Is it a common occurrence? Is it occurring quite often, or can we improve on it? So I would encourage that. I know the auditor has his, has his hands full right now, but I think that would just be reviewing the process, just see if it's working, because I think it's spelled out or defined already in the steps that are taken throughout the government.
Well, Counselor, I think that's a part of what I would expect the auditor to take a look at. And, you know, and sometimes when we ask the auditor to look at things like this, you know, I don't know what he might find, but there are unintended consequences. You know, when you cut staff, you know, and you don't have bodies, you can't recruit because you can't pay, we can't find a traffic engineer, because we can't pay. So I'm just saying, I welcome the auditor to look, because I think you're going to learn some things, and we're going to learn some things that, you know, we just, we just keep moving. So I welcome that, and so I think it's going to be a good look.
Okay. All right. That concludes discussion, and so since this is not an item, you'll have to do an oral vote. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right. And we'll refer that to Mr. Redmond. Next on the list is Ms. Avis Love Lewis. Is Ms. Lewis here? All right. And Mr. Olson. Yeah. Paul, come on up, if you would, please. Mr. Olson's here to talk to us about crime prevention
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Paul Olson. I live at 13830 Uptown Lane. Reason why I brought up my hat, because I'm a retired major. You see the airborne. I did thirty-seven years. Went from Vietnam as a young kid. I was a private, got out as sergeant, came back in as a private, went, became a sergeant, and then went to OCS, had three company commands and battalion commands. So been up and down the pole a little bit. And the reason why I'm bringing that up is because I was willing to give my life for the freedom of speech. And in the Constitution, there's the first ten amendments, and that's called the Bill of Rights. The very first one is the freedom of speech and the freedom of press. And when I found out that the public agenda was going to be minimized from five minutes to two minutes, I considered that as an infringement. And the reason why number two is most important is because that protects your rights to bear arm and from a tyrannical government. And let's go back to the public agenda. I just think it's really wrong. I mean, David Erickson, I clocked him. He was eleven minutes, and then it took another, it took a total of twenty-four minutes from 6:06 to 6:30. There's no way in God's green earth he could have given that in a two-minute presentation. And I really find it ironic that the city manager, of all people, would want to present that. Did you present that at all, Isaiah? Who presented the five minutes to two minutes?
No, you, you keep going. We don't answer questions in between, but it's ten minutes is what we allow.
I understand that, but somebody has told me that the city manager minimized it from five minutes to two minutes, and that was hard for me to believe. And the reason why I say that is because, you know, that's why I was asking that question, Isaiah, because I, a year ago, it took me five minutes to defend you, because they were going to throw you under the bus at the time. And I was the one that came to your aid of all, all things. And I was thinking like, you know, it took five minutes to do that. But I really think that by limiting, that that's limiting your right for dissension and redress. And I remember Josh McCune back in, Mayor Wetherington's was the one that came up with the timer. And at that time, it was however long you wanted to speak, but then it said five minutes, and then basically you couldn't even talk one second over it. They cut completely off. What I would like to propose is five minutes. If you go down that direction, and at four minutes, you give the buzzer, and you got one minute to finish up. I have no problem with five minutes, okay? But the thing that I would like to see is like the school board, excuse me, Gary, excuse me, I'm talking. No, it's rude, and you guys do it all the time.
He asked what you were talking about.
Okay, 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 okay. All right. I think I was talking loud enough.
All right. Let's, go ahead, Paul. You got your time.
Okay. The thing is, is the school board basically puts it in the front of the agenda, and I've asked that time and time again in the past. And I think that really, honestly, having citizens wait here two and four hours is like you treating them like second-class citizens, okay? And that's just how I feel, and that's how people perceive it. I noticed that the nonprofits and the oriented presentations, I believe that they should be put in a different segment of the city council. You know, something that takes up like with, you know, David Erickson, he has a financial impact on the city, so it should be formatted as a presentation and any nonprofits that are presenting it, it should be in a different segment than the public agenda. Now I want to go on to the theft. Our place, Terry's Floris, was broken into back in August and September, two times. Broke out three windows, stole over a couple thousand dollars. And we had cameras on there. It was young use at the time, and they couldn't find it. They broke in a second time, stole the van, so it was auto theft, and we got really good pictures at that time. My son-in-law went through the neighborhood, and we were able to identify these young men, and they knew exactly where it was. It's 2608 Juniper Avenue. And why I say that is because the person who owns it is Greg Countryman, who's the marshal. And he has a business called Invictus Transformational Wellness Center, and he's, and I looked it up in the Georgia Secretary of State's office with the incorporation, and he's the CEO, CFO, and the secretary. That's kind of a new for me. Charles Miller is a registered agent for him. And when I was, I had some dialogue with Nathan Smith, who called me up and said, "I heard you. You're kind of mad. Well, what do you think if somebody broke into your place and did that kind of, just tore the place up?" It wasn't just the damage. It was, you know, havoc. And the problem here is, is when you have two or three thefts, after a couple thefts, what happens? Your insurance companies basically state to you, "Hey, look, we can just run you out of business by not insuring you anymore." I had that happen on Buna Vista Road, where there was two break-ins. I had a jewelry in there. I had to take the jewelry line completely out of there, because they broke in and did that to me and ran me out of the jewelry business when I had the floor shop there on Buna Vista Road. So it's very detrimental in that respect there. But what's really alarming is the fact that when Nathan Smith was telling me this, I said, "Well, tell me a little bit about this thing." And what they do is they basically import these juveniles who have criminal records and throughout the 159 states. I mean, 159 counties within the state of Georgia. And it's a 501(c)(3) tax exempt. And what's troubling is to find out that five juveniles can be in that household, and they don't have to let anybody in that whole area, the residency. And you heard Dana Smith, "I couldn't be here last time, because my back was killing me at the time." And these guys get paid, and this is according to Nathan Smith, $190.11 per day, per juvenile. So I totaled that up, and that's $5,700 per month, times five, that's $28,000. Times that equals $342,198. And there's 178 of these things there. And then I talked to Superintendent Dr. David Lewis, and I, and I knew there was a lot of juveniles. He said there's about 200 in the system, and they're a very disruptive factor. So here we are. We're importing criminals, and we're supposed to be addressing crime prevention, and you know that those kids, they couldn't care less about getting good grades. So you know what that does to the scores. It does, you know, they just, you know, like, there's really no hope. But what's happening is a lot of people are getting very, very rich off of it. So I talked to Dana Smith about two days ago, and she said about four days ago that the neighbor was basically being harassed by one of the youths, and he was giving the guy a finger and calling him obscenities. And I said, "Well, did the cops come?" "Yeah." "Did they make a police report? Did they file a complaint? Did they get him for basically disorderly conduct?" And they said, "No." And I said, "Well, you guys need to know that if somebody does that, then basically you file a complaint." And what I'm going to submit to you is not just the eight police reports, but also, you know, their occupation license and everything else, but also a very disturbing Facebook messages led to group home workers arrest for sex with boy, 16, police say. That was here, and Tim Chitwood wrote it, said Invictus, and all he had to do is go to Georgia's Secretary of State's office and look up and see who owned that. Instead, he went to Better Business Bureau, did not address who it was. And the thing is, it's very disturbing to think that that's our marshal that has this, and basically, this is what happened within their place there. They say, and there's reports here of drugs and all kinds of things that they're basically terrorizing the neighborhood. So to me, I think when something is a nuisance, that you guys should address that situation and eradicate that situation, because they've only been there for about maybe five, six months, and that much has went on. And I'm going to submit this to your clerk of council, and she will, hopefully she will make copies of all the police report, which I did an open record request, and also the 911s. And there was two pages of it, and all the infractions that they've committed. And I'm thinking like, my goodness gracious. You know what I mean? But it just, it just really is disturbing as far as what it does to people's business. But it, it just, it just really is disturbing as far as what it does to people's businesses because you can actually run a person out of business if they don't have insurance. You know what I mean? And the last thing I want to address is that when I looked for the city council meeting, I didn't find it in the newspaper on Sunday. It was not there. It wasn't in Mondays or it wasn't in Tuesdays. And I called Lindsay and asked her about it and they said, well, it's, it's up to the Ledger Inquirer, but what's disturbing is the fact that most people out there in Columbus read it and it was in the Charter Review Commission in 2010, made it the legal organ. So therefore, I would hope that it would be required that people are cognizant and know what's on the city council, having a meeting and what's on the agenda so they can be, you know, abreast of what's going on. You have a great day and if I don't see you, Merry Christmas, God bless each and every one of you.
Thanks, Paul. All right, we've got Counselor Barnes.
Paul.
Yes, sir.
First of all, I want to commend you on your military service. I, I knew this and I think it was, it's sometimes important, not that you're bragging.
No, sir.
But, but it, it takes something to go from the enlisted ranks.
Yes, sir.
To go to OCS and to be commissioned, to go from a private to major, so it was a heck of an accomplishment. And I know you did it for love of country, God and country, that's all veterans serve for, is because we do love this country so much, so I want to commend you on that. I'd like to address the fact that I wasn't being disrespectful. A lot of times when individuals come up.
Yes, sir.
On the public agenda, we talk, just to, we, we bounce ideas off of each other and ask. So it wasn't being disrespectful and I wanted to let you know that I was not being disrespectful in that regards.
Yes, sir.
The, the third thing that I want to address, I think that one of the caveats of this government is that we do have a public agenda. And because it allows the citizens for whom we work for to be able to come up here and address situations that they may not be able to address. And, and we work for all of the citizens here in Columbus, so I think it's a, it's one of the caveats that we have here, that we do have. And when I got on council, it was five minutes and I think it's been lengthened, in fact, I know it's been lengthened to 10 minutes.
Yes, sir.
Because a lot of times you can, you can't really sum up everything, present something and sum it up in five minutes and I'm glad that we do. To clarify, the city manager didn't say that two minutes. What, at that particular time, I made a comment that I think that we need to come up with a solution. It's very important for us to get feedback from the citizens. In fact, it's crucial. But at the same time, the reason that discussion was generated is because we do have specific business items that affect the citizens that we need to do. And, and, and a lot of times it drags on.
Yes, sir.
And I think myself personally, I would like to see the public agenda maybe specified in advance that we, that it's going to be placed on this time of the agenda.
Yes, sir.
So that we can come in and do the business that's crucial for the citizens and very important for us to do. And then it allows the individuals to come on a public agenda, not have to wait if they come at a specific time. But I know all this has to be worked out with this council here. So I don't want you to, to.
See, I haven't really been paying attention to what's going on.
Right.
Lately, to be honest with you. I've been trying to stay out of the fray and they were vilifying Isaiah on Concerned Citizens and on my Facebook.
I see.
And Charles Miller and Jonathan Davis said it and they were saying, what do you think of the city manager reducing it from five to two minutes? And that's why I asked what I asked, to, to get it from, excuse me, the horse's mouth, you know what I'm saying, in that respect, not to degrade you as a horse, whatever, but that's a, that's a saying, you know what I mean? I wanted to get it from the horse's mouth, exactly what actually was taking place. And it wasn't to denigrate you in any way at all. And, and I'll be honest with you, I came from a family of seven kids. I was the only one that got a college education. I worked 11 at night to 7:00 in the morning in the Gibson Mills in Fort Dodge, put myself through junior college. I worked, had a company command and I worked from 4:00 in the morning to 11:00 at night going to Troy State at night. So nothing has ever been given to me. My second grade, my mom only had a second grade education, my dad had an eighth grade education. I'm the only one that's made something of himself. You know, two of them died of drugs. So when people will say what they want to say about me, they don't know the obstacles that I've overcome in my life.
I understand. And Paul, let me just tell you something else because there have been times when you've come here, and you know what is something my grandmother taught me a long time ago? Don't ever be concerned about what someone says about you because Christ too was perfect. They spoke about him. So who are you to be concerned? And that's a good rule. You have come over the years to council and a lot of people classify you as a gadfly. I've heard it in the community.
It's very derogatory.
But, but, and that's very derogatory, I don't think it should be, but you have come to this council and you have pinpointed specific things that we might, that we have overlooked. And so the, the public agenda is extremely crucial because.
I think so.
Because we get feedback from the people for whom we work.
So we're laying this to rest. Can we also, I'm asking you, can you put it at the first of the agenda? Because honestly, to sit there for two, four hours, and I can understand going past the first, having a ordinance and a first reading or here, public hearing and then put them next, but that's how the school board does it and they have no problem. I mean, honestly, you know, we, we're your constituents. You are basically, you know, you're supposed to be the servants of us. And I'm just asking you guys to start being the statesmen, not a politician. Politicians are just always shifting and catering to the self-interest groups. A true statesman wants to serve the constituents at all costs and at everything. And that's what you really want to actually achieve in this life, is to be a true statesman. That's what I'm saying.
And so I'm glad we clarified that with the city manager and to also let you know what the scope of the conversation referenced the public agenda was all about. And, and, and the city manager, the mayor, and the council here, we're going to have to figure out because the, the, the government, the city attorney's agenda, the mayor's agenda, is, all that is very important and it's for the citizens. So it's a balancing act, we've got to do that. But I think it is a crucial balancing act. And I know the mayor and the city manager and, and my fellow councillors will come up with a resolution that is very respectful for the people for whom we work, with you and the citizens of Columbus. And then getting to the final one. The issue with that, I've gotten together with the chief of police on certain issues on that, on that house. I've also gotten with the city attorney and with these citizens and they've filed their, their complaints to Atlanta. And so I talked to Dana and so we're just waiting to hear.
Yes, sir.
Something back so that, that we haven't forgotten about that, that's still in operation.
Thank you, sir.
And, oh yeah, and, yeah, thank you, Gary. And of course, you know, there's not anything that we can do. The state took that out of our hands, so it's the, actually the state of Georgia that's.
You know, the real thing, you know, when you guys push up legislative agendas, the only way they can shut it down, the caveat is, they have to have two violations on the proprietor or the manager. And the thing is, is when, and, and I put it in those notes that there should be a curfew when these people exceed it, exceed it, it'd be like, just like a youth detention center, that basically there should be like a time clock. And I got this from Nathan Smith, who is the night manager. And the thing is, is that those things happen, you know, 11:00 at night, 12:00 at night. And I'm thinking like, well, why wasn't somebody watching? Why wasn't somebody monitoring them? And the thing is, if they're not going to be put in the youth detention centers and they have criminal records in the past, then we need to set up a legislative agenda to basically say, look, if there's so many infractions that are committed by the kids that are in the facility, then basically that, that thing is shut down completely. Just like if you have a, let's say, a bar and there's so many shootings that go on, because what you guys are going to say, hey, look, this is becoming a real nuisance. Well, when these people are breaking into establishments and we talk, I talked to some people at Circle K, right up there on University Avenue, Macon Road, and they were trying to break into people's cars when they were in, from gassing going into the establishment and they had to chase them off. I mean, these are the things, if you really went out there and put your ears to the ground, you'd find out that these kids, these kids are some real characters. They, they, they just basically run rampant. They, they don't care. You know what I mean?
The things that, that come directly under our purview, like for instance, the, the collection of cars and the, the goalposts that obstructed and that's being taken care of the chief of police. But the other matters, that's at the state level, they, that's completely.
But I would like to make $300,000 a year off of one entity like this. I mean, this is, you're talking about a cash cow and you times it times 178, that's like over $40 million a year that some of these people, and a lot of them are in the law enforcement, if you'll sit there and look at it. And I don't think any of you guys even have it in a data system that you have this 178 that we even know about. They're out there like cocoons and you guys don't have an idea at all, the police don't have an idea where these establishments are and so they basically just move on in.
Bottom line is that.
Yes, sir.
When we had, say so, it was being controlled. When the state took it out of our hands, we have not. And so.
Then I would lobby with the state legislature and put some terms and conditions, that's what I would do, so that you could eradicate that, so you, you don't have to sit there and increase and exacerbate the crime situation here in Columbus, Georgia. Serious. You have a great day, God bless you again. Merry Christmas. I won't.
Thank you, Paul. And this has been something, so that you know, we've been working on for years about the public agenda, since you had a hand in helping us get it, you know, moved up in the agenda. We've brought innumerable suggestions and just hadn't had, you know, as you can see, there's different, different ideas. So we work hard on this to make sure people are heard and yet we can get to city business. So we just wanted you to know that, okay? Thank you. All right. We've got counselors and folks lined up. Let's see here, and we still have people on the public agenda, by the way. Let's see, we've got city managers, you want to say something?
I do, Mayor, and I'm going to try and move quickly because, and first, let me just thank Mr. Olson for coming. And of course, I don't subscribe to Concerned Citizens, so I don't know what they say about me. And I appreciate him sharing with me that they had some things to say. So thank you, Mr. Olson. I, I did have some things to say about public agenda last week. We had 12 people on, on council, on public agenda last week. And so, you know, I think Counselor Barnes said it well, there has to be a balance. Of course, we want people on public agenda and we want a public agenda. And so my questions centered around, you know, how long, with 12 people on the agenda and he just said Dave Erickson spoke for 24 minutes and he was there for 25 minutes.
No, wait a minute. They spoke for a certain period of time and then they got questions from counselors, which is the way it's going to go.
But if we multiply.
So we need to be fair to the people who are talking, they get questions.
So if we multiply that times 12.
Right.
That's about 4.8 hours.
Yes.
And we had 12 people last week. And so I don't know, I know there needs to be a balance, I know there needs to be a public agenda, I just don't know. My question centered around, how long should you speak? Two minutes, five minutes, 10 minutes? How often, on the same subject? Should the subject be limited to city matters? Where on the agenda should we include public agenda? At the end of the agenda, at the beginning of the agenda, or where it currently is on the agenda? Should it be on proclamation meetings? I don't know. But citizens, when I say balance, citizens are waiting at home on something that they want to see on TV that's on the agenda. And, and I'm going to ask, I'm not going to go through it, but I want them to put up on the screen, I, I went through my agenda, the, the agenda that you're going to address tonight. And, and on my agenda, on the business component, there's $805,043 of decisions you got to make tonight. On the grants component, if you were rolled through to those, there's $255,030 of decisions that you have to make tonight. On the purchase agenda tonight, you've got to make $6.7 million of decisions tonight. And when I add together all of the financial decisions that you're going to make on the city manager's agenda tonight, it comes to $7.8 million tonight, one single meeting. And then when I look at the updates that we're going to talk to you about, potential splosts in excess of 350 million, I'm going to talk to you tonight with the finance update and share with you on the $275 million budget for this fiscal year, what we've spent year to date. When you add those two together, that's about $600 million of discussion that we're going to have tonight. And then when I look at the economic development twos and some we mentioned tonight, we're going to talk about enterprise zone, military zones, state opportunity zones, tax allocation, districts and federal opportunity zones. Those are all the things that are on my agenda tonight. And somebody is sitting at home saying, when are they going to get to that $8 million that's on the city manager's agenda? When are they going to get to that $600 million that they're going to talk about and how they're spending money today? There needs to be a balance. And so while we know that people need to come and talk at this meeting, I agree. I don't know where they should be, at the beginning, the middle, or the end, and how long or how often, but somebody is going to want to watch council meeting about the $800 million of decisions you're going to make tonight. And so my only point last week was if it's eight hours into a meeting, before you get to talk about the $8 million, you're worn down. Now you got to talk about the people's business, spending $8 million. And so that was my concern and so I just wanted to highlight that and I'm going to leave it there because I'm not going to make the decision about public agenda. You are. And whatever decision you make, we're going to live with it, we're going to work with it and that's fine with me. But I, I just wanted, I want you to be fresh when you get to spending or talking about this $8 million.
Well, we thank you. I think we hear you. We've had how many presentations about altering public agenda?
A lot.
A lot. I would say at least six that I can recall. So there's a lot of great proposals, we've just been unable to get a consensus, but it sounds like everybody wants a consensus and that's, that's a great thing. So hopefully, this next presentation will lead to a, a very productive consensus. All right, we've got, moving on, we've got Mr. Easterbrook. Norm Easterbrook's here and, and he's with the River Center and he'd like to talk with us about legislative agenda support. Thank you, if you would just state your name and address, please.
Sure, I'm Norm Easterbrook. I live at 1347 Everhart Avenue. I'm director of River Center, which is located downtown. I'll be brief. I want to, at your last session on the city manager's agenda, there was an item to add to your political, your legislative agenda for the general session this year that related to a Georgia sales tax credit for touring musical and musical productions. I want to thank city manager Hugh Lee for putting it on your agenda, I appreciate that and especially thank you for keeping it on your agenda because I had to leave the meeting to do some other things and I promise I'll, when I do that again, I'll schedule my time better. So thank you very much, I appreciate it. I just wanted to add some detail to that. In the last general assembly, they passed legislation that allowed for a state sales tax credit, very similar to what they afford film production in the state. It sets parameters so that a, a musical production can happen here that is intended to tour outside of the state, that allows them a state sales tax credit. So there's a parameter for the amount of money they need to spend in the local economy and there's also a parameter there for the number of weeks that they need to tour their production. What we were asking is that because this is such a valuable tool for us to utilize at River Center and around the state, and I'd like to tell you what we did this past year, we, we had a production called Something Rotten. It was the second national tour for that production company. They chose Columbus to launch their second national tour. And what that means is they bring all of the sets, costumes, all of the crew, the designers, the creative talent, all of the dancers, everyone who's related to the tour, they brought them to River Center and they were here with us for about 14 days. That was 110 people that came and visited our community and they utilized, they bought over 1,000 nights in hotels, they paid for food and meals and all the things that they needed to do to mount a production and put it on the road for 32 weeks and they started that tour here. We're doing a little study about the economic impact of that and we think its local impact for those couple of weeks will approach about $1 million in our community for that short period of time. It also helped to pay and it paid, we hired 44 individuals to work full-time over those, that period of time. So when a production company wants to do that, the state offers them a sales tax credit and it is difficult for this, for the production company to meet the current parameters that are written into the legislation. The parameters are that they need to spend at least $500,000 in the local community and that the production needs to tour for 52 weeks. Typically, a tour like this does not spend that amount of money to get the tour started. It's not as expensive to do this as it is for film. And typically, a tour lasts for about 30 weeks.[1763.01] lasts for about 30 weeks. This one was lasting for 32 weeks. So, what we'll do is go to the legislature and ask them to amend those parameters, so it would be easier for the production companies to work in our community. As a result of what we did with Something Rotten, we now have two other production companies that are inquiring about doing the same thing here in Columbus. It represents a new source of economic development for the community, and certainly new revenue lines for River Center. It's an activity that we do not need to use any corporate support for. We don't need to borrow anything, renovate a building. All of the infrastructure and the mechanisms are here to achieve that here at River Center. I've been as quick as I can about that. I'm happy to entertain any questions you might have or any comments. I just didn't want to leave you stranded in approving that, for which we're very, very grateful, and we'll work with the legislature to see that we're successful with it.
Great. Thank you, Norm. We very much appreciate you and your partnership.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. We are done with public agenda, and we're moving into the city manager's agenda. Mr. City Manager.
Madam Mayor, thank you. First on my agenda, I've got unused sick leave payment in the amount of $365,000.
Got a motion and a second for approval, seeing no discussion. Please record your votes electronically. And it passes.
Next on my agenda, I've got J.R. Allen Parkway U.S. eighty-quarter study. And I'm asking for your approval to enter into an agreement with GDOT.
Got a motion and second. There's no discussion on this matter, so you may record your votes. Oh, I didn't see any. I'm sorry. Did not flip over. Counselor Thomas.
I, excuse me, I would like to ask Mr. Jones if he can just elaborate a little bit on this, what this entails and what we're looking at here.
Sorry.
Counselor Thomas, what we're trying to achieve here is trying to be proactive in looking into the future, what J.R. Allen Parkway will look like eventually over the next five or 10-year period. We're seeing more and more pressure in terms of traffic increasing out there. We're going to look at, going back and looking at, again, looking at the intersection, from the intersection itself at Flat Rock and Kitten Lake and forward, and going into, as far as to, of course, to the state line. These are GDOT funds we're dealing with. We're looking at, though, trying to determine what needs to be done there. Are there interchanges out there that need to be improved? We believe they are. Are we looking at additional third lane each direction that may be required sometime? And then, at the same time, how are we going to fund it? I'm also hopeful, we won't be focused on it completely, but I'm hopeful we'll be able to determine whether alternatives we may have in routing some of that traffic away from J.R. Allen at the same time. So, we're looking at trying to figure out what we should be trying to achieve with this roadway and making it, and make sure that it still functions as a roadway over the next five or 10-year period.
I know that we have heard here, and we have put on our legislative agenda, that we are encouraging GDOT to look at Interstate 14. And if that comes about, as has been described, it will start in Texas and come down the J.R. Allen Parkway, out 96, over into the middle of Georgia. Is that going to be part of this study, how that might fit into the use of J.R. Allen Parkway?
The full intent of the study is not to address, not necessarily to address any type of interstate connections or anything else at this point. It may be, it may be a secondary item that comes into play here. But our main focus is, how do we make sure we maintain this roadway and keep it functional for years to come? We want to be proactive in terms of meeting those needs now.
Well, I know that that was one of our legislative agenda items, so I would ask not to lose sight of that.
Yes, ma'am.
As you're dealing with GDOT. I know that I saw a news article, a news story that was on one of the Macon stations about the Interstate 14 in the Macon-Sandersville area. And GDOT said, "We're done with that part of the road, and we're not going to do anything else to it," which was sort of disappointing to me. And that's why I want to make sure that we keep, not necessarily to promote the I-14 completely in this, but to make sure that that is one of the things that this council has said is an important piece of that roadway.
And I guess that goes...
And I'm not asking you to amend, you know, what you're doing, but just every once in a while, say to them, "Hey, you remember that I-14 stuff?" You know?
I think that's a good point you make. If we can squeeze it into the study, we should take advantage of it. So, we need to at least ask questions.
Yes, you're right. Our main objective, like I said, is just doing that road. But if there are other ways we can divert that traffic, or when we project traffic volumes out over the next 10, 20-year timeframe, where else does that traffic need to be going? How else can we get it through Columbus safely without continually congesting the roadways we've got today?
As much as we can get I-14 through Columbus on its way from Texas to Augusta, I want us to try to do that. So, just keep that in mind, if you will. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. We have Counselor Davis.
Mr. Jones, if you would, just wait just a few more seconds.
Sure.
Just so council knows, it was, I think it was several months ago that we had a meeting where the Director of the DOT, the Georgia Department of Transportation, came to Columbus along with our representative Sam Welber. And I think, Mr. City Manager, you were there. Counselor Garrett was there as well. It was a very productive meeting. I think this study highlights on some of the conversation that we had at that meeting. I welcome this study. I think it was brought up, actually, I brought it up as being one of the major concerns now that we're having. Anybody, you know, you don't have to be a rocket scientist to go out about quitting time. Just go down to the J.R. Allen there between River Road and Bradley Park, and just look at the amount of traffic that's backed up trying to get over into Alabama. And we talked about that. Matter of fact, our representative Calvin Smyer even brought it up. He was very concerned about it, too, and asked the directors, "Is there something we can do?" What I see is this as a, as a step to try to figure out what we can do. And, you know, I know there's probably limited options, but we need to figure out something. Those lines are not getting any smaller, that's for sure. Those backed-up traffic lines are not, congestion is not getting, not getting any smaller. So, I welcome this study. I think that in large part, that's probably what this is all about, is trying to figure that out. And, you know, having that bridge there going across over to Alabama with two lanes, I'm not sure what we can do. We discussed it that day, if it could be a joint project between, or a joint intergovernmental project between the states. But we need to start somewhere, and I think this is, this is the right step here in trying to figure out what we can do to, you know, to improve as the, into the future.
And Counselor Davis, you're absolutely correct in your statements. I want to remind council and the mayor as well, though, that we have been to you before and told you that GDOT is in the process of getting ready to put out the multiple message boards. Get questions. I had, it took me a while to figure it out, too, but the orange so-called silk fencing along J.R. Allen is where the placement of those boards will actually be. There are actually five of them that are going to go up. They were supposed to have started in September to help us monitor traffic, to provide some guidance, particularly those folks going into Phoenix City, that when the traffic really does start backing up, like you're talking about today, they can find an alternate way out, either going back down to the 13th Street Bridge or even further down to Oglethorpe. But that's the thing we're trying to look at, trying to be, again, proactive in looking at solutions and trying to make sure we take care of that roadway as it is today.
All right. Thank you. All right. Let's see now. I think it was up for vote, and we had discussion, and that is closed. And so, you may record your votes electronically. And we got somebody who needs to push a little bit harder. Nope, that's it. We got it. Okay. Thanks. All right.
Next on my agenda, Madam Mayor and Council, I've got a Second Avenue Streetscape study. It's a $200,000 grant, and we're asking your approval.
Got a motion for approval. Is there a second? Okay. Does for lack of a second?
I'll second.
Okay. We've got a second. And then, we have discussion. Counselor Allen?
Thank you, Mayor. Can you help me understand what they're trying to do? Is this going to narrow Second Avenue to two lanes with a median and plantings and all that?
No, sir. I don't think it's designed to be a median. You know, it's already a narrow, we have very limited right-of-way.
Right.
And we're trying to beautify as you come into uptown from J.R. Allen, if you will. And so, it's about landscaping, hardscape, benches, intersection improvements, and so forth. But no, not putting medians. You just don't have the, we don't have the, what we need to be able to do anything like a median on Second Avenue. But streetscapes. You want more? Is that, Counselor?
There are a lot of remodels.
Yeah. Okay.
Counselor Thomas?
Mr. Jones, how does this fit in with the overlay district that we had several months ago down?
Down Second, so?
Down Second Avenue.
It really does not play into it, because the overlay is more of a zoning function than it is a transportation one. The intent with this, this study is to overall look at this, it's one of our major gateways into Columbus, into the heart of downtown itself. It is, in some cases, it's the first impression that folks get of Columbus when they come in to the area. We want to make sure that that's a good impression. We are going to look at streetscapes, hardscapes, and all that good stuff that goes with it. We want, we're going to look at the entire package of what really is involved along Second Avenue, and how we can go about best improving it, and making sure it is the entranceway we want into the community. And we've had a lot of conversation about this over the last several years, a lot of questions. And we thought it was just best to go ahead and try to answer this, because by that, you know, bring an expert in, you know, that's anybody 50 miles out, and bring them in and tell us, you know, what we could actually do and shouldn't be doing with this roadway. So, that's what we're trying to achieve with this grant.
Got Counselor Pugh.
And Mr. Jones, they will be having public hearings, right?
Yes, ma'am.
This is just merely for the study to be done?
Yes, ma'am. We're going to have public, like anything else, there'd be generally like a minimum of two public hearings we'll have, where we go out and hear what the public has to say, offer suggestions, and then come back and tell them what we heard, and see if we're on track with the right process. But yes, ma'am, there will be public hearings in this process.
Okay. We've got Counselor Davis.
Director Jones, in looking at this, I know that this is a step in a process, a long process. But this is, would I be correct to say, this is pretty much identical or what, the same process, the same steps we took on Fourth Avenue, and the streetscapes there, and trying to figure out how to work that. This is pretty much what I view as doing the same thing, as one of those steps, and moving forward to try to figure out how to, how to improve Second Avenue. I think we all know that people have been concerned about it for a long time. It's not easy navigating Second Avenue.
Yeah. We want, Counselor, we want to make sure we have put a set of fresh eyes on this project, so we can get some, somebody that can look at, you know, that doesn't have to deal with this every day, and can actually look at it and offer some suggestions and recommendations. And from those suggestions and recommendations, we're going to bring them back to council and see how we can best implement them, and how it's going to take to implement.
But I think you're right of Veterans Parkway, yes.
Yes.
I mean, where we went in and improved intersections and traffic signalization, aesthetics, and trees, and so forth. Yes.
Right. Right. It's a step in the process.
Absolutely.
Okay. Let's see. Counselor Huff.
What are the, let me see it. Hold on. The traffic calming ideas, what's being considered?
I don't know that. We're going to go out, once you, once you hopefully approve this contract for us to go forward, we'll put out our RFP, invite consultants to make a proposal to us. We'll lay out the parameters, what we expect to be done in that, and then we'll select somebody. And then, we'll ask them, so what can you, what do you see us doing out here that can help us either with traffic calming, or whatever the case may be, and ask for that kind of input. And hopefully, they'll come back with some ideas, some realistic ideas in terms of how we can implement this project and make it work for all of us.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. That concludes discussion. We have a motion and second. If there's nothing further, you may record your votes electronically. And it passes.
Mayor and Council, I've got a request to enter into an agreement with Quarter for the addition of a sat walk at Cooper Creek Tennis Center.
Got a motion and second for approval. Is there any discussion on this matter? All right. You may record your votes electronically. And it passes.
I've got the sale of a lot at North Lake Center and adjacent property. The city of Columbus, a few years back, had to purchase some property to improve an intersection. And that $16,000 that we spent, $16,470 included other associated costs paid to this company. And now, we've got a company coming forward trying to do a project, and they're going to encroach on city property, and they want to purchase a portion of that from us for $8,235. An engineer recommends selling the right-of-way while retaining a drainage and slope easement for 50% of the original property value. And we're asking your approval.
Got a motion and a second for approval. There is no discussion, so at this time, you may record your votes electronically. And it passes.
I've got a number of grants, and they are victim of Crime Act competitive grants. And this first one is $67,650. It's a $54,120 federal award. It's a $9,780 from the 5% crime prevention surcharge, and $3,700 in can match. Asking your approval on this
All right. We've got items six through 11, a motion and a second for approval. We have Counselor Thomas for discussion.
And Mr. City Manager, all of these will be administered through the District Attorney's Office. Is that correct?
Yes. Some through District, yeah, all through District Attorney. Yes.
Thank you.
We have Counselor Allen. Counselor Al.
Not coming, oh, there is. Thank you, Mayor. Just to be clear, the District Attorney's Office understands that the city's not obligated to maintain the positions. Once the grant runs out, that's it.
Make sure to turn the memo.
I'm trying, sir. As soon as they, I pray to goodness that the next mayor will have a system that works. Yes, there we go.
We do make that clear with all agencies receiving grants. We do.
All right. That concludes discussion, so we will vote on those several grants. You may record your votes electronically. And it passes.
And next, I've got Interlight MaxTAM signal software deployment. This is something that Georgia DOT is doing, and there is no cost to the city. And it's going to upgrade the city's signal system to Interlight MaxTAM software.
Got a motion and second for approval. There appears to be no discussion, so you may record your votes electronically. And it passes.
I've got a number of purchases. First, I've got 30 Dodge Charger Police Pursuit Vehicles.
We've got a motion, is that a second, Counselor Woodson? A motion and second to approve purchases A through Q. That's the Dodge Charger Police Pursuit Vehicles, the build-out packages for pursuit vehicles, laptops for pursuit vehicles, installation programming services for pursuit vehicle laptops, shotguns and accessories for pursuit vehicles, GMA lease for 30 Dodge Chargers, 30 build-out packages, 30 pursuit vehicle laptops, including installation and programming services, and 30 rifles with accessories, truck bodies for 25 CU YD rear Loader Garbage Trucks. We have crane carrier chassis for 25 CU YD Rear Loader Garbage Trucks. Uh, we have crane carrier chassis for twenty-five CU-YD Rear Loader Garbage Trucks, a truck body for sixteen CURD Rear Loader Garbage Trucks, grab-all trucks, it's the Georgia State Contract, GMA lease for four twenty-five, uh, cubic yards, C-U-YD, uh, garbage trucks. Uh, we've got street sweepers pursuant to the Georgia State Contract, GMA lease for two street sweepers, uh, used oil and antifreeze recycling services, it's an annual contract, HVAC preventative maintenance service, it's a rebid of an annual contract, and dial-a-ride Champion Challenger Bus pursuant to the Georgia statewide contract. Uh, there appears to be no discussion, so you may record your votes electronically. For some reason, I think Counselor Davis, yeah, there we go. Uh, and it does pass.
Madam Mayor, um, next on my agenda, I've got several updates. Uh, one update, um, was removed. It's to save a pet, and it's because, um, staff, um, was ill, and I'll, I'll say that, and I know that that's one that Counselor Walker Garrett is interested in, and we will be bringing that back. Uh, but one thing that I inadvertently have not listed and should be on my agenda, we've got the President, CEO of the Chamber of Commerce here, and I'm going to have him come and talk about an economic development ask of this council.
Yes, and as he comes up, it is, um, as an add-on to your updates on the system here.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council, thank you for a few minutes. I'll try to be as brief as I can since getting your long agenda, but certainly won't answer any questions you may have. I'm not here tonight representing the chamber, I am Brian Anderson, live at seventy-six oh one Grand Ridge Road, Columbus, Georgia. Uh, but I am here representing the Mercer Medical School Columbus Campus, really Steering Committee is, is the best term we have for it. We've been working for, well, since I got here. First time I heard about Mercer Medical was when I got appointed to this, uh, this wonderful city, and we have had a desire to take our, our third and fourth year program to a full medical school. That's been a desire of the community leadership for a while. It dates back to seven or eight years ago when there was a, a pronounced need for more physicians in Georgia, specifically more physicians to serve the rural communities and those communities like us, which are considered, uh, mid-tier, mid-urban, that are surrounded by rural. We are losing physicians at an alarming rate. Uh, these physicians, uh, that come through the Morehouse Program and Mercer have a higher percentage of, of going back to their rural roots to serve. Mercer only accepts Georgia students into their medical school program, so those that graduate again, have about sixty-eight percent of those will stay and serve the rural communities of Georgia. From an economic development standpoint, every physician's office is about a two and a half million dollar economic impact on the communities they serve. Uh, all of our physicians' offices, our doctor, our hospital physicians will tell you that again through retirements and other reasons, we are losing doctors at an alarming rate, and so we want, we want to fix that. So the proposal is that the Mercer, uh, program, which is currently third and fourth year students, would be expanded to a full one through four year here in Columbus. Again, this discussion goes back a number of years, but the cost of, of, of developing a, a full medical campus was, seemed to be prohibitive. It was about a twenty-five million dollar if it had to be a greenfield build, but through some luck and prayer and just good things happening, uh, we have found a facility that can be retrofitted appropriately, uh, to a cost of about twelve to thirteen million dollars. That makes it much more doable in, in our community. And so we would be able to be one of those three campuses that can serve, again, the medical, um, program at Mercer University. Now, you may think, well, why can't you just expand Savannah and Macon, which we don't really care about because that doesn't help us? And the reason is because to teach medical, to teach doctors, you can have other doctors act as professors and teachers. You can't just, um, hire professors of, of a medical type, higher ed institution. So, um, expanding Macon, expanding Savannah, expanding Athens is not as easy because you don't have those clinical rotations that physicians need. We've got a reputation, I'll tell you, after just six years of having a third and fourth year, we are highly desired, meaning the students that come here, uh, love Columbus, they want to be in Columbus. We're now one of the first choices, I have to say that carefully because Macon doesn't love that, but the students going into their third year get to choose which campus, and they choose Columbus overwhelmingly. So we believe this will be very successful. We'll go from about forty-five or to sixty, which is what we average now, to two-hundred and forty medical students here in Columbus. Outside of the capital bill, which is going to be again between twelve and thirteen million, depending on exactly what, um, aesthetics are chosen, uh, the, this Georgia operating budget for higher ed will put in about nine and a half million dollars annually to operate the school. So there'll be no out of, out of pocket for any of us, uh, the state of Georgia will pay for that. Um, the, the timeline is to get this before the General Assembly in this coming session. Once they approve the governor-elect's budget that would include this nine and a half million dollars, we would know that we didn't have the operating. The school would then, Mercer would then, would move forward for seeking accreditation from the accrediting bodies. We would begin renovation of the building that's been identified, and then hopefully the school would open in the fall of 2020 to begin a full four-year medical school. So the ask for you tonight is that, uh, you consider investing approximately three and a half percent of the capital cost of the facility, i.e. five hundred thousand dollars over five years, so a hundred thousand over five years, that I think would, would be logically to come out of your Economic Development Fund, because this is viewed as not only a, a higher ed or talent question, but also an investment in economic development, as we would have physicians and professors teaching here. The other part we would get is we've, um, Mercer has proposed that they would put a research component to the school. It'd be about ten thousand square feet, and to put that into some level of perspective, Savannah is the most recent campus expansion, that's, that campus has been open about eight years. They are now generating about a hundred million dollars a year in research grants that are coming to Savannah because they've got the medical school and they've got the research component. So we're thankful that Mercer believes in us enough that they, they can add that component here as well, and that would give them research capacity at Columbus, Macon and Savannah. So I'll stop there and answer any questions rather than boring you the rest of the details. That is coming as a formal request from the Steering Committee, who has been raising private capital, uh, to the tune of about ninety-six percent of the estimated cost.
Great, and I think that the City Manager, you had some information about where this might come from if it was to be done?
Well, I, I think, um, Mr. Anderson has, has made the point of where it might come from, and that would be our Economic Development Fund. You know, we currently fund, uh, the Development Authority, point-two-five meals, and, uh, there is an additional point-two-five meals that we retain in-house. And he is asking for five hundred thousand over a five-year period, a hun, a one hundred thousand dollars a year. And, and the logical source, if you, um, decide, and I hope certainly you do, that this is a good investment, it's an economic development investment, then over a five-year period, that's where the hundred thousand dollars would come from.
Okay, all right, we have Counselor Garrett.
I think, Mr. City Manager, you can speak to this. On the RSE trips, we've seen in every seat consistently, healthcare is a main driver of the economy.
Absolutely.
And I think this is a worthwhile investment that will pay dividends because it will help us bring better staff to hospitals. It's going to expand jobs in all kinds of ways, and I'm excited about it.
All right, great. Uh, Counselor Thomas?
Uh, Mr. Anderson, did you say you're on the board at Mercer, or you're?
No, ma'am, there's, um, it's been an ad hoc committee, for lack of a better word, of just community leaders for about three years, looking at every proposal, so there's no formal affiliation of it.
I know that we do have some of our, uh, community leaders on that board.
I think Jimmy Elder is on the board as a trustee, yes, ma'am.
I just want to know. Um, the, the other thing is, um, I know that if this council approves this kind of funding, it will, um, say to the General Assembly and the folks in Atlanta, this is really something we want, we're backing this, we think it's a good idea. What do you see as their response? Are, are we getting good vibes from, uh, the incoming governor and those folks about, um, funding, the state funding and so forth? And, um, I, I'm not asking you, is this a done deal?
Right.
But I'm asking you, does it look good?
Yes, ma'am. As a matter of fact, um, some were so aggressive and confident, they got put into the special session a week ago as a part of the relief effort for those communities affected in South Georgia. I don't think that was appropriate, but there was those that thought, let's go ahead and get it done. Um, South Georgia representatives did not like that and asked it to be removed, and so we said, we agree with you, take it out. But they came right back to us, both the Mercer leadership and the community leadership, and said, we will back this when it comes up in January. Both candidates up through the campaign supported this expansion for the need of doctors. We've had no, no suggestions, they've changed their mind. So we all know formally when it, the, when the governor-elect's budget is proposed at the biennial, which I think is in two weeks, and then we've made every pledge that's come from a private investor contingent upon the budget being approved. We would say the same thing to you, that this is contingent upon General Assembly approval of the operating funds.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Great, well, Brian, thank you so much for all your efforts, and this will come back, and the City Manager will bring this back for council consideration.
Exactly, at the next business meeting, um-
Which is the fourth?
Yes.
Yep, we've got, oh, excuse me, we've got a few more here. We have, um, hold on, Counselor Davis.
Mr. Anderson, if you would, when, uh, along with this request, would you put a, I know you highlighted a lot of matter, a lot of, uh, uh, points tonight, would you put us a white paper together and-
Absolutely.
So next time when it comes to us, we'll have that in front of us so we can-
Yes, sir.
-just go down the list and check it off. I know that fund, we talked, uh, I've talked about it before, I've always thought that that fund is, is there to produce jobs and invest in our community, this sounds like it is producing jobs. I'd like to see that, that, uh, component of it on the, with a white paper, uh, I'm sure it will, it'll, it'll show those kind of-
Yes, we'll get to it by the end of this week.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, we've got Counselor Baker.
It's, my question is along the same lines, and I know you mentioned operating, we don't, we don't fund operating anyway, it would have to be some type of capital project investment, but we should probably have something in advance as far as what we're investing in, what type of, I guess it'll be a lease with the state as far as the facility goes. I mean, we, we're going to need to know what, what we're investing in, what, what, to make sure that if it's a, a facility, that there's something to back up a long-term engagement with the facility, that it won't come, not work out, move somewhere else or pick a different place.
We'll put that into data, but just so that the public know.
And some of it may be confidential at this point, I don't know if it is or not, but-
And, and I was going to say, uh, Mr. Anderson, if your office could provide something to us by Friday.
Absolutely.
Uh, and we'll send it to you on Friday, and then when we bring it on the agenda, of course, Tuesday next week, it'll be with that information as well.
And I assume it will take a, a budget amendment, since we've closed out the budget, I'm assuming it'll take a budget amendment?
Well, well-
Because that was not-
Well, it would come out of the Economic Development Fund-
Yeah, so already budgeted funds.
And they're already in, yeah, yeah, well, they, so it's already there, it's just not committed.
I understand, it's there, it wasn't committed during the budget process, I get that.
Yeah, and that's what you would be doing, committing funds that are available for commitment. It's what we would be asking you to do.
I understand that, I just want everybody to understand what-
Yeah, and, and they're saying it won't need to go into, to the budget unless it's due this fiscal year, and the first initial payment is not due.
That was one of my questions, when, when, what's the timeline?
Yeah, and I, and again, I'm trying to be brief, maybe at fault, um, to help you all, but we were asking for a lot of contingencies because we, and, and nobody's going to put any money in if there's not commitment from the state. They have told us that this is a need and that they plan to do so, so we've asked every private investor, just like we're asking you as a public entity, the public-private partnership, to commit that if all things line up, you would commit. The funding would probably not be needed any earlier than third or fourth quarter of twenty nineteen.
Okay.
More than likely twenty twenty, so it would go into your next budget.
Right.
We want a commitment that we can tell the legislature that we've done our job, you, you now do yours, and we'll all come together. But I still will put, put that into writing to you before the end of the week.
Okay.
We'll put some of the project scope about the building, I will just share, um, it's not highly confidential, but a, a private entity has purchased the building that we think is appropriate. They see this as an appropriate community investment, so they are offering the building, they are donating the building at their cost. So we're not buying it, so all we have to pay for as a community is the renovation of that building in order to teach medical school.
Right.
So, so what we'll ask you for next Tuesday is the commitment, and then if you approve the commitment, then we'll include it in the next budget.
Right, okay.
Out of that Economic Development Fund.
That's, that's fine, thank you very much.
So we will see it next week then, and, uh, thank you so very much, Brian.
Thank you all, good luck.
And so I'm going to ask Mr. Anderson to have his staff to get that to Deputy City Manager Hodge, who will send it out to the mayor and council on Friday. Mr. Anderson?
Yes, sir.
Uh, next I've got a SPOLOST, uh, update, and Deputy City Manager Lisa Goodwin is going to talk about that. Um, and Deputy City Manager Goodwin?
Thank you, thank you. Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, I am here this evening just to give you a glimpse of some potential, um, special purpose local option sales tax projects. As she goes through and provide you with the document that lists, um, all of the projects that departments have, um, brought forward so far, with the understanding that this is not all of them. Uh, if you recall, earlier this year, uh, I came forward and provided each of you with this document that was a facility assessment, uh, that told you everything that we felt and that we saw was wrong with our properties and all of our facilities. Uh, and so that was earlier this year. Uh, we also, uh, with that, we have included some of those needs in the potential SPOLOST project booklet. Uh, and again, these are just draft potential, uh, projects that we want to just you to look at for now. We do have other departments that will be providing some updates to us, so this is not all of what you will see. Uh, they just, uh, again, provided us their critical needs. These are not recommendations at all, strictly just a glance, a first glance for you to take a look at these. Uh, you will see in the document, um, some highlights. What I have listed here are the departments that are included in the books and the totals that they have, uh, provided in terms of their potential projects. Again, this is not all of them, and these projects range anywhere from two-point-three million dollars to all the way to a hundred and forty-eight million dollars in projects. Uh, and, uh, uh, again, we still have more to come, such as public works, numbers may increase. You will also see roads, uh, bridge improvements, as well as some stormwater improvements that did not make the document at the time of printing.
Well, and Deputy City Manager Goodwin, let me just interrupt you to say that there's a PowerPoint, a copy, that's inserted in your book that I did not see.
Yeah, they have.
And I just, I want to make sure they see this.
Yes.
You have a copy of it?
Mm-hmm, in the front of your book.
In your book, yeah.
Yes, that's correct, thank you. Mm-hmm, the PowerPoint and the document as well, okay? Uh, but again, the projects that you see, um, total from the departments that have already submitted over four-hundred-and-two million dollars worth of potential projects. Again, this is not all of what you will see, this is just the first glance. There are also potential projects from some of our partner agencies. Uh, again, these are pro, some projects, of course, have not yet been identified, but we know that through the Liberty District, um, and, um, City Village, uh, our Department of Juvenile Justice, Health Department, uh, you know, those are projects that you will perhaps see as well, and we want to go ahead and list those. We did put on here, uh, the Economic Development, and you will see, uh, specifically what some of those things entail in the document that I provided to you of sixteen-point-eight million dollars. You may also recall that during the legislative luncheon, uh, Chief Ricky Boren came forward with some, uh, some concerns that he had with the transport of juveniles to the RYDC and felt that additional bed space was needed, and so we're working and we'll be talking with them, I have some calls into them, uh, and waiting for call back so that we can look to see what that need is in terms of the number of beds that they may need and what that cost could be. Uh, and that's something that we can kind of work with them on, uh, to partner, and it's just going to make life easier and it's going to cost us a lot less if we don't have to go from county to county trying to find bed space. We have it right here. Uh, won't say a whole lot about the options for the Government Center, those costs are not included in this. You have, uh, heard that over and over, and so, and you'll be hearing more about that in terms of the options, uh, of the Government Center. But again, just want to just put that in as a placeholder to let you know that those numbers will be included at some point, but not included in this document here just for those purposes. Uh, some of the next steps that we, uh, you know, we want to consider is again, receiving final requests from departments. Again, um, some of the departments still have not yet provided all of their needs, they're working on that, uh, and, uh, and so we're waiting on some additional numbers. Now, if council decides that they want to pursue a special purpose local option sales tax, uh, there are some considerations. If you- sales tax, there are some considerations. If you decide, the question is, will that be in 2020 or 2022? With the understanding that the school system's ESPOLOST will expire in 2020, and the TESPOLOST, which is the transportation purpose, special purpose local option sales tax, that will expire in 2022. Now, as you are considering whether you want to pursue that, you know, we're gonna just continue to refine our list. We're gonna continue to work with the departments, getting additional information, making sure that everything that we have received meets that definition of, of a SPOLOST. What we did here is we just took everything that they got. Whatever they decided, we didn't alter anything that they provided to us. So that's that first look. We will go back in and refine the list to ensure that everything that is on this list meets that definition of a SPOLOST. And so that we'll be doing that. If you determine that you do want to pursue that SPOLOST, and you want to pursue it in 2020, then, in the general election, that means that it will be on the ballot, that question will be on the ballot November the 3rd, 2020, in the general election. And these charts, of course, you have seen before. They were presented some time back by our Director of Finance, Angelica Alexander, and so these are taken directly from her presentation. If you want to pursue in 2020 in the general primary, then it will go on the ballot May the 19th of 2020. Again, if you want to pursue in 2022 in the general election, then that question will be on the ballot November the 6th, 2022. And, again, timeline of 2022 for the general primary, it will be on the ballot for May the 24th, 2022. And so those are some considerations, some things that, for you to just take a look at and, and, and just kind of, you know, let us know what your thinking is. But we wanted to go ahead and just to share with you where we are today in putting some things together for a potential SPOLOST. Again, those decisions will have to be made in terms of when. And so with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. And if anyone needs an additional copy of that facility assessment booklet, please let me know. I'll be happy to provide that to you. Questions?
I don't see no questions at this time.
Okay.
Right.
All right.
Thank you. Next, we're going to have Columbus Economic Development Toolbox. Director Jones is gonna come and talk about Economic Development Toolbox. Well, we'll go ahead and do the finance update, give him some time to get. We'll, we'll go ahead and do the finance update and let him follow her. Finance Director Angelica Alexander.
Good evening again. What you are, what you will have before you is the financial snapshot, snapshot as of the end of October 2018. And so, just, the only difference here, this particular fiscal year, is that under the operating funds, we no longer show Park and Management as its own operating fund. That fund was merged into the general fund. It is no longer its own operating fund. But one thing I will say about Park and Management, under the expenditures section, you'll see it listed here, the expenditures for FY19 show that they're actually down in expenses about 16% from FY18, and revenues are actually up 57%. So we're doing well in Park and Management. I just did wanna point, point that out while she was passing out the, the snapshot. So starting with the general fund here, the general fund is up 22.29%, and this is primarily due to timing differences. If you remember, in FY18, we only had one collection date for property taxes. That was December 1st as our due date for property taxes. And in FY19, we went back to two installment dates, the first date being October 15, and the second installment date will be December 1st. So the difference, the majority of the increase that you see here is just due to the timing difference as far as when the taxes were due. The other local option sales tax fund is up 2.87%, so that's good news for sales taxes. The Stormwater Sewer Fund is up 88.43%, and again, this is one of those funds that is primarily supported by property taxes. So being, you know, as of last year, we didn't receive any tax revenue until late in the year. You'll see the dramatic increases here for the funds that are primarily supported by tax revenue. That, again, applies to the paving fund, which is up 267% over FY18. The Medical Center Fund is up 431%. Integrated Waste Fund is showing a decrease here of 5.97%, but that is due to one-time insurance monies that we received in FY18. It was a close to $300,000 that we received in insurance money for a vehicle that sustained fire damage. And so, had it not been for that one-time insurance settlement, the Integrated Waste Fund would actually be up about 2%. The emergency, or the E911 Fund is up 19.82%. Bit of an anomaly here. We did receive a one-time donation in FY19, so that is primarily the reason why that fund is showing such a dramatic increase. The Economic Development Fund is up 431%. It is also one of the funds that is supported by property taxes. The Debt Service Fund is showing a decrease of 42.06%. And again, this is a timing difference with this fund showing the decrease. There's a revenue receivable that was posted last October that has not been posted yet. We will get that posted in November, so it will show up on November's report. But had it been posted, that fund would be up about 28%. The Transportation Fund is up 53.35%. Trade Center Fund is up 8.29%. The Bull Creek Golf Course Fund is down 2.56%. Oxbow Creek Golf Course Fund is up 13.71%. And the Civic Center Fund is down 3.54%. And again, that's just timing differences with the events as they're scheduled at the Civic Center. So moving down to the other local option sales tax fund public safety summary, we've collected year-to-date about 6.1 million in revenues. Our expenditures to date are about 7.5 million for OLS Public Safety. Moving down to the other local option sales tax infrastructure summary, we've collected more than 2.6 million in revenues, and our expenditures year-to-date are about 2.6 million. So moving over to the left side of the snapshot, under the general fund expenditures, you'll see the departments here and the amount left to be expended in their budgets, as well as the year-to-date expenditure summary. The goal here as of the end of October is to be at or above 66%. So if you, if the departments are at 66 or above, they're not highlighted here, they're on, on track. And for the ones that are highlighted, for instance, with the city attorney's litigation, that's on the watch list, and that's just because we're still defending several million in claims. Information Technology, they have annual fees for various software lease maintenance agreements that are due at the beginning of the fiscal year. For Engineering, there's an annual payment to Motorola for radio maintenance that is also due at the beginning of the fiscal year. So that'll level out as we get further into the fiscal year, and they'll likely come off of the watch list here. The jury manager, again, there's a subscription due at the beginning of the year, as well as petted jury fees. And lastly, we have the Public Defender's Office, and it's not necessarily the Public Defender's Office. We do, out of the same budget, pay the state contract, and we pay that a month in advance. So that's why it's on the list here as highlighted item, even though it's not over budget, or it won't be over budget. So that is the snapshot in a nutshell. On the website, on the Finance Department's website, I posted the detail as far as the revenues by line item, as well as the OLS infrastructure project summaries and the TESPOLOST infrastructure project summaries. So I'll take any questions if council has any.
I don't see any questions at this time.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Director Rick Jones will come forward now with the Economic Development Toolbox update.
Good evening. We want to come and bring to your attention things we, what I call our Economic Development Toolbox here tonight. We want, we want to remind you about some things we've got going on in that toolbox itself, as far as what we can do for economic development in our community. At the same time, we want to also introduce you to a new one, a new item, that you're gonna hear some, hear some information about, some, some conversation and talk that goes on with it. And we want you to be aware of that when it all does come about and that. Real quickly here, we are looking right now at, there are, there are really four key items right now in the box, for the most part, enterprise zones, military zones, the state opportunity zones, tax allocation districts. And this new one that adds to the fifth one is this, this thing called federal opportunity zones. And Director Johnson's gonna come in a few moments and share with you more information about what that really all entails. But these are all the, all the zones we've got. We've got plenty of them, and we want to share that and remind you about where, what good they are for us. Enterprise zone itself, of course, those, those are the things that the state mandated, not necessarily, excuse, not mandated, but allowed us to go in there and deal with areas that do have things like pervasive poverty, unemployment, underdevelopment, general distress, and general blight. And you see off to the, the right there, the different items that go with those. The idea is for those communities to have an opportunity, sections of the community to have an opportunity to rejuvenate themselves, to reinvent themselves, to bring more economic development into the area from, from that standpoint. You've got to have at least three of these five criteria to make that happen. And these are the items you can do in enterprise zone itself, and from retail and residential, to processing, to telecommunications. You can actually do residential, new to residential development in, in an enterprise zone, along with daycare facilities. That may not sound like much, but if you're, if you're trying to find a job and have a job, and you had to have somebody take care of your child, daycare is all important to it, just like anything else. These are all the eligible activities we've got going in enterprise zone now. The enterprise zone also requires that, in order to do this, though, you've got to, you go into an enterprise zone, you've got to create five or more jobs, five new jobs involved with that. You've got to maintain those jobs for at least a period of 10 years to make this happen. You're encouraged to at least provide 10% of the jobs for low to moderate income individuals. You provide economic stimulus, and the business can be new or in expansion. And as you go in terms of that, you see in terms of dealing with your taxes, a reduction from that standpoint as it goes on. You can, again, like I said, do residential in the enterprise zone itself, as long as you don't exceed the, the value of land by a ratio of five to one. Tax exemption cannot exceed 10%. And then you must got, yes, like I said, it has to be new residential or residential rehabilitation, or even rehabilitation of other, of an existing, existing structure to qualify. So this is the tool we have to encourage redevelopment activities in some of the areas we've got. This, the council itself established the enterprise zone back in 1998. We did that in accordance to the State Act of 1997. We re-adopted it in, in 2008. We expanded it in 2014. So we've been very active, been, been very pro, pro development in terms of making this, this thing a real process and, and working through with our community itself. We are due for re-adoption in, in 2018. In fact, we're going, actually to ask, bring it back to you at next council meeting, ask for, basically to re-adopt it again. We're not expanding it. We're maintaining what we've got, because you see here now, it encompasses a little over, almost 5,300 acres itself today. But in order for the enterprise zone to maintain its relevance and legality, we're gonna have to adopt it again. And we want to bring it back to you next time. We've also identified this thing, of course, as what we call the Columbus Business Development Center itself. This is the area, the area in, I guess, the salmon or the orange color here. This is on the, on the map. As you can see, the area, it really encompasses the enterprise zone today. It incorporates a large area in South Columbus and into the, to the west. That's the area we're talking about now, and that's the area in existence today as the enterprise zone itself. There are also these things called military zones.
Quick question.
Yes.
Let's see, we've got Counselor Huff.
On your residential rehabilitation deal, that can be a, a small project, one or two houses?
Yes. Keep in mind also, in terms of doing, doing anything with the enterprise zone itself, this council makes the final determination. So when someone comes in application, which we process the application, and make sure when you saw the criteria, we submit it to you a recommendation, and you make the final determination.
Well, when, when he says a small project in the enterprise zones, you gotta create a minimum of five low-income jobs.
You gotta create at least five jobs, but what?
Five jobs for residential?
Five, low-income, yes.
Okay, so I'm saying, if you create five jobs in order to rehab the property, is that what you're saying?
Well, you, you can't create, I don't think you can create five jobs and then you spend 90 days to rehab a project and it go away.
Okay. I'm, I'm just trying to understand what he means by the residential rehab.
But if, if you meet this criteria in terms of, again, not exceeding this, this ratio of five to one, in other words, you can't just come in and build monster mansions down there. You gotta make, make sure it's housing that's really compatible.
Right.
Oh, yeah, I understand, I understand that. But, yeah, what I'm trying, what I'm trying to understand is, how will it work as far as the residential rehab?
Well, well, let me just say.
See, I have, I have someone that came in an enterprise zone that's doing very well. I know, create the jobs. I'm saying, I'm just trying to understand this one aspect of the residential rehab using the enterprise zone.
Well, as I understand it, you've got to create a minimum of five.
Five jobs.
Permanent, low-income jobs to qualify.
Okay.
And, and, and then, of course, we've had to deal with before, where you deal, build residential properties, and then they fall under the, the tax abatement criteria for the 10 years in question.
Okay. So if, if a person created five permanent jobs and was rehabbing one house at a time for the next 10 years, does that qualify?
I, I would have to, I, I think we would have to really take a close look at that, because one house seems.
No, no, you know, I'm just saying.
Yeah, I hear you.
I don't, I truly don't understand.
Okay.
I'm trying to understand, there's still block right here, what it means by residential rehab.
Yeah, I think we would have to bring you back.
Under the enterprise zone.
We'd have to bring you back some details.
Okay.
On, you know, if it was a subdivision.
Yeah.
But one house, that's real, I'd have to, I think we'd have to go and look to see how that would work, because typically someone built a house in one location, it could be an enterprise zone, but then they moved, they, then they.
No, I, I didn't mean just one house and stop. I'm just saying, if they were not a big developer, and they were going through redevelopment over the next five or 10 years, does this qualify them to, you know, like, a big developer would come in, contractor would come in, he may build two, three houses at a time in areas. I'm saying, if you were a person coming in and you created the jobs, is, does this qualify if you were doing, you may have 20 houses over the next 20 months, and you created.
But, and I think you're asking a good question. I think we need to consider it a referral.
Okay.
And then get a response back to you.
I know you have to meet the criteria, five permanent jobs for said time and all that, over 10 years. Okay.
Yeah, I, I want to make sure we put the right information over the airwaves, because, you know, and so, and I think that's a question that needs to be answered on air when we come back.
Okay.
For those listening.
Okay. Thank you.
Exactly.
That is, that's what we're pulling under, is what Dr. Reck did.
Right. Yes. Yeah. But, so we need to come back and answer.
We'll come back with that next week. That question. There's this thing called military zone, which is also, it is a state, is really state administered in it in terms that you have to have a census tract that really is close or in close proximity or borders against the military base, that has 15% or greater poverty. It offers state job tax credits. It's gotta create, anything goes in those, those military zones, gotta create at least two new jobs. And they offer, the state will offer up to a $3,500 per job tax credit. Like I said, the state administers this program. This is one that you see here, again, everything pretty much in the orange on the map here are those areas in Columbus, Muskogee County that consider. are those areas in Columbus, Muskogee County that consider are considered military zones. These are again administered by the state. Uh, they are, they are functioned through the, through the, uh, not only our office, but through the chamber, through the development authority as well on any, anything that may happen. Uh, I don't know that anybody has taken advantage of this program yet, but it's there for, for the taking right now if someone wants to do that. The same thing can be said about the thing called state opportunity zones. They also are administered by the state. Uh, they offer, uh, tax credits to businesses and one of these designated areas, they got to again, create two new jobs. It's got to have at least $3,500, they can get the $3,500 per job with tax credit. It pretty much is the same thing with just a different name and different title on it. And it's again, for the only those census group, those census block group areas with 15% or greater poverty eligibility. What is really different about this, I want to show you this, you can't see it so much on this map, is we had to go in there and for the state to, to authorize this, we had to go in there and individually do this by each lot and parcel to make this thing work. It wasn't just going there and taking a, a wide brush and say this area meets the criteria. We had to literally go in and take each lot and make, and make that determination of whether it meets the criteria or not. But you can see on the map here, this is what we have now as far as state opportunity zones in Columbus. Uh, and that's just another opportunity for somebody to utilize. If you're all familiar also with, with this thing called tax allocation districts, um, involved with that.
We have a question from Counselor Woodson.
Yes. Yes ma'am.
I just want to go back.
Okay.
If we, I had, I just have a question. With this, um, state opportunity zone, if we designate land that we own, you know, that city owns, as a state opportunity zone, wouldn't that increase the value of that land when we sell it because it offers an opportunity?
City-owned property or just property in general?
Their city, our city-owned property, can they be designated as a state opportunity zone?
I do not recall, Counsel Woodson, I had to go back and do some more research on that for you. I know that this is not, uh, a program that's easily to, to get into. Uh, we had to really kind of, lack a better term, fight to get into this program because there are other communities and Department of Community Affairs is only going to allow certain number of these areas to be included. And we got Columbus in there probably about four, four years ago, five years ago, somewhere in that timeframe. But I'll have to go back and double check in terms of value and so forth for you and let you know. I, I don't have an answer on that one right, right away.
That's fine. Please find out because I've been learning a little bit about this because someone was asking me questions. So I did a little, you know, research.
Okay.
And I think this is a great opportunity if we can on property that we have. And I, I, if I understand it correctly, I got to go back and, and review it a little bit more. It get, it gets value to the land. And we have a lot of property that we could probably sell or negotiate to have more development come in if it was designated as a state opportunity zone.
Right.
So that's why I want you to go back and see if property that belongs to the government qualifies.
Okay.
Not just the private sector because right now it's the private sector.
We can do that.
That I know of.
Yes ma'am. Tax allocation district, you all should be somewhat familiar with those now from, in recent times in terms of where the future property tax really established, you establish a baseline, anything over that baseline, we set aside, as we said earlier today, uh, for infrastructure needs or other options and that. All the existing taxes still go to the city of schools. The additional tax are pled- are pledged to the TAD. Does not impact any type of personal, personal property or E-SPOLOX fund itself. And then the, of course, we had to, to adhere to the state statutory in terms of creating a redevelopment plan. We had to identify the boundaries. Uh, those boundaries had to be certified to the state and the state has certified them by December 31st. The one we're just, we have just got through with and dealing with, uh, uh, oh shoot, Midland Commons. Uh, we have, we have certified those numbers and have sent them off to the state and waiting for them to come back to us. And then council has, has to adopt and approve a project within the TAD. You're, you're still, even though you designate an area TAD, you still have the control here as a council to adopt and approve a project in that. These are, these are the TAD areas now. Uh, they're, they're ongoing. I will tell you, we've had some interest in, in dealing with the TADS for as TAD projects, we had not, I had anybody officially come forward yet. We have had some conversations about that possibility. And I expect sometime, probably early part of next year, you're going to see some activity with TAD applications, uh, involved here. But these are the ones that, that are ongoing from there. And then you say, these little colored splotches on this map indicate where those TADs are actually located. And again, we've had, we have seven of them now that are active and we are actually trying, actually trying to pursue. So those, those are the ones that are actually in existence now that, all the zones. Now, I want to ask that Director Johnson come and, and share with you about this idea about what federal opportunity zones are.
Good evening. I'm pretty sure most of you have probably heard a little bit about federal opportunity zones. Probably some of your constituents, constituents have asked you about how they can get involved with this program. So we just kind of wanted to provide a little overview of what this program is and how it works and how our community can benefit from it. So this program was established by Congress in 2017 as part of the Tax Cut and Jobs Act. And it was to spur long-term private investments in low-end communities nationwide. It offers ways to reinvest capital gains into distressed communities through opportunity funds. In exchange for those funds, there's a graduated series of incentives tied to long-term holdings. It was the first national community investment program in over 15 years and has the potential to be the largest economic development program in the U.S. Unlike the state opportunity zones like, um, Rick just talked about, these zones are, these, um, zones are not implemented through the city. The local government has no administrative reporting or regulatory responsibility for these federal opportunity zones. This is the map of the designated opportunity zones in Columbus. And as you can see, a portion of it falls in Counselor Huff's district. Um, part of it is Counselor Woodson's district. And part of it is Counselor Garrett's district. Um, these zones were not, uh, chosen by the city. They were chosen actually by the state. Um, the state picked the zones based on, uh, poverty. And then they were submitted to the government, governor, and the governor submitted it for approval to the IRS. So here's a little diagram that kind of shows how this works. So taxpayers, when they have tack, uh, capital gains and tax deferrals, they can get those from making investments in these qualified opportunity funds. And these funds invest in qualified opportunities, opportunities on properties. So how do these funds work? It offers investors three incentives for putting their capital gains to work in rebuilding economically distressed communities. So first they'll get a temporary deferral. So they can defer their capital gain taxes until 2026 by putting and keeping unrealized gains in an opportunity fund. They also get a reduction on those. So when they enter, when they invest their capital gains, they have to pay the, the deferred taxes reduced by 10% if that opportunity, opportunity fund investment is held for five years. And then they get another 5% if it's held for 10 years for a total 15% reduction. And then they also will get an exemption. So any capital gains investments made through the opportunity fund accrue tax free as long as the investor holds them for at least 10 years. So this next slide is kind of a little example of how it works. So if an investor decides that they want to, uh, invest a million dollars into an opportunity fund, say on June 30th of 20, 2018, after five years, they'll get a thou- a hundred thousand dollar tax deduction. So they'll only have to pay, um, 900,000 after five years. Then if they keep it in for seven years, they get an additional 5% tax for an additional 50,000. So at the end of 2026, they'll only be liable for taxes for 850,000. So they won't be liable for taxes on the entire million that they invested. So if, say the investor sells the investment on June 30th, 2028, which is 10 years later, and they earn 500,000 in appreciation, the investor is still only liable for the taxes on the 850,000 dollars. There's no taxes on the appreciation in the investment. So what are opportunities on funds? They're investment vehicles organized as corporations or partnerships for the purpose of investing in qualified opportunity zone property. They must be held at least 90, they must hold at least 90% of these assets in these properties and will be audited twice yearly. All investments that seek to benefit from the tax advantages of the property must be made through an opportunity, um, zone fund. Who qualifies, qualifies for them? You can use institutional investors, investment banks, CDFIs, venture capital partnerships, angel investors, REITs. All of them can qualify, um, to invest in opportunity funds. They differentiate themselves, um, along multiple lines from geographic scope to investment type to management style. And localities may be able to set up funds of their own if they wish to. There's three types of business properties eligible for investment as well. Original issue stock of qualified opportunity, opportunities on corporations, interest in qualified opportunities on partnerships, tangible property used and qualified opportunity zones. And if the original use does not commence with the opportunity zone investment, then the property must be substantially improved in order to qualify. Types of investment opportunities, you can do high, high-growth startups, real estate, manufacturing, brownfield redevelopments, coworking space, re- rental housing, affordable housing, and much more. So what are, what are they doing now? First off, they're setting up the funds. And what they're trying to do is raise awareness about the program among local banks, financial institutions, investors and business networks to encourage the establishment of opportunity funds specializing in Columbus. And we need to be thinking about who may be interested in establishing these funds. So any corporation in, in Columbus could establish a fund. And they could establish that fund to be directed specifically to Columbus areas if they choose to. So if, for, for instance, if Sanovis wanted to, if Sanovis has some capital gains and they wanted to invest in an opportunity zone fund, they could do so. And that would be, and then they could actually pinpoint where they want or what type of development they want, where, what opportunities on they want it to occur in. So we also need to be facilitating investment, which is ongoing. We need to raise awareness about the program now with local entrepreneurs and high-growth companies that may be eligible for investment from opportunities on funds. Work with universities, startup incubators and accelerators and other ecosystem partners to ready Columbus to take advantage of the program. Determine how this new financing model can integrate with existing or anticipated development or infrastructure plans. And reach out to local, regional and national funds to make sure they are aware of eligible investment opportunities in Columbus. And this last, um, image is just a map showing all of our tools, economic toolbox, um, tools and where they're located throughout Columbus. And do you have any questions?
I have a question for you. For an example, from the medical school, can they take up, can they take an opportunity of this federal opportunity zone?
My understanding, I'm, I'm going to say I'm, I'm, I know enough to be dangerous, but my understanding is yes. If they have opportunities, if they can identify a, an investor who wants to invest into a fund and they're, where they want to locate is one in one of the qualified funds, uh, locations that were identified, then they could work with that investor to work, uh, to use opportunities on funds for that development.
Okay. I just want to make sure that I understood it correctly. And the first thing that came to my mind, the presentation we had, I thought, wait, isn't that the perfect opportunity? Isn't that a model that can be used?
Yes.
For that type. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Davis.
Ms. City Manager, if you had somebody that had a significant amount of capital, they want to invest in your community and create a lot of jobs in your community, would that be something that you would want to see happen or you would want to encourage? And they would want to take advantage of some of these new investment opportunities, these, uh, that's being offered?
You said, would I want that to happen? Absolutely.
Well, you know, we've got a, and this is for the council, you know, we've got a request into our legislative delegate to make some changes that would, uh, lift some of the restrictions now that we have in some of the areas in our town that we've designated as TADS. I think they're way restrictive based on how we've done them. Now that, and this is something that I, I don't want to get into deep into this conversation, but it begs a question. And it's kind of where I'm going with this. Um, now that you've got the federal government providing opportunities, incentives for those to get involved in their communities and others as well, bring capital in your community, invest, uh, the state as well. And you've got some of these areas that are overlaid into other areas that we've already kind of designated and with what we call economic tools out there. I do ask this last, uh, part that, that was presented to us about the, the federal opportunity zones. I think we need to ask ourselves the question that in some of these areas that we've got outlined, why would we want to continue doing what we're doing, especially when we're a city that needs revenue to operate our government? When we've got these new development tools that are out there that actually, from my perspective, are far better and actually benefit individuals more so than a collective effort that might take a long time to even come to fruition. Something to think about. I think this council needs to really try to grasp that and understand that because, you know, we didn't have this back two, three, four years ago, but now we do. So why would we, why would we want to keep some of these things if it's interfering, if it's restrictive to investors or people wanting to develop in our community? When we've got a new economic tool here that's, seems to be far better and would provide a greater incentive for any investor to get involved in their, in a, in their communities or, or cities through, in this case in Columbus.
Well, yeah, I, I don't have the answer to what you're saying, but I will say this. Uh, the, obviously the idea of having, you know, uh, enterprise zones, uh, military zones and state opportunity zones and federal opportunity zones that, that's brand new. And that's basically why I wanted the staff to share with council tonight because of the federal opportunity zones that's brand new that we are trying to get a better understanding on. And I says, why don't you just refresh in the process of the twos that we currently have in our toolbox? But we, the more, in my mind, the better. And I just need to think about what you just said, but the more the better because we want, because in these areas that are economically depressed, if they've got four different twos, they have options to select from. And we just want to get them to start doing something in some of these areas. You know, for example, we don't have people taking advantage of the enterprise zone in the way that I think they should take advantage of. And Counselor Huff was asking questions about that. I mean, it's five low-income jobs, but there's a 10-year tax abatement. You get 100% for six years and then you get 80% for a year and 60% and then 40%. And you don't start paying your full load for 10 years, but people are not taking advantage of it. That's just one two option in the toolbox. And so if that will attract them, let's let them use that. And if that won't and military zone will, then use that. And so the more in the toolkit, we, we giving them so many options and, and so I, I hear what you're saying. If you've got. You're right. Federal military zones, then take all that other stuff off the table. Well, I want them to select the option from the menu and, and let's get something done. I guess that's my, that's been my thought or approach, you know?
Having the opportunity to select from many of these that were presented tonight is a good thing. That's not a bad thing. I think that the issue here is where you have a, a, a matter where they're now overlaying each other.
Yeah, but.
And when they're overlaying each other and they're restrictive, to me, that's not a good thing for the city. So I think we need to have that, we need to have that discussion.
Okay. Let me take a look. I, I mean, I hear what you're saying. I just don't, yeah, we, we gotta, we gotta do more work to try and figure out what you're talking about. we, we got to, we got to do more work to try and figure out what you're talking about.
Well, the easy way, if we can get our, our representatives up in Atlanta to fix things for us, then we wouldn't have to deal with this anymore.
All right, good.
If there are no other questions, that concludes my agenda, but I do have two, I guess, ribbon-cutting opportunities that I want to announce.
I was to lead off with, we are in the process now of gearing up for the dedication of, of two of the t-slosh projects, the first will be on December 17th at 2:00 P.M., that will be the dedication and the completion of the Columbus River Walk, we are at that point now where we're ready to open that up to the public, and when it's open, you'll be able to actually walk, ride a bike, jog, whatever you want to do, from Lake Oliver all the way down to Fort Benning, when I have them get off the River Walk, we're, we're ready to celebrate that day, and we hope that you'll put that on your calendar to be that, 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 that day with us as well.
And we'll send them something in an email to...
Yes, we're getting ready to send out the invitations this week, I want to let you know ahead of time, and if that wasn't enough, we're going to come right behind on, on the next day, December 18th, and dedicate the Follow Me, the Follow Me Trail, with the bridge, you know, going out spanning Victory Drive and so forth, we're ready to celebrate that, that completion of that project as well, and open it up to the public, and we'll be, we'll be announcing where we're going to have that event take place out there, we are finalizing the site now, but we want to make sure that you understand, that, that event on the 18th will also be at 2:00 P.M., and we want you to come and, and, and we want the public to come to both these events and, and celebrate with us in terms of what we, we be accomplished as a community in developing these two projects, so December 17th at 2:00 P.M. is the, at, at Bib Mill will be the, the dedication ceremony there, and then the next day, on December 18th at 2:00 P.M., we will be celebrating the dedication of the Follow Me Trail at that point.
Thank you, Ms. Jones.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, that's all I have tonight.
Wonderful, all right, we will go into the Clerk's agenda then, Ms. Glisson.
Madam Mayor and Council, on the Clerk's agenda, items one through four are biographical sketches for Lauren Becker, Torrance Goodwin, Ramon Minge, and Mamie Pound, item number five are three street closures for upcoming events, item number six is a memorandum for me requesting authorization for Counselor John House and Counselor-elect Charmaine Crabbe to attend the mandated newly-elected official's training, if I can get a motion?
All right, motion and second to accept, all those in favor, please state aye.
Item number seven are minutes of various boards, they can be received.
Got a motion and second to receive minutes of the Board of Elections and Registration, the Community Development Advisory Council, and the Housing Authority of Columbus, all those in favor, please state aye.
Item number eight are various board appointments, item A are appointments for the Land Bank Authority and the Personnel Review Board, and they can be confirmed.
Got a motion, is there a second for confirmation, a second, all those in favor, please state aye.
Item B are nominations, they're being made by Mayor Tomlinson for CBB, and they can be confirmed.
Got a motion and second for confirmation, all those in favor, please state aye.
Item C are designated district seats, we still need representatives for District One on the Recreation Advisory Board.
Yes, sir. I'll give you that information, I have.
What was that name one more time, I'm sorry? Lonnie Boyd. And this, excuse me, this nominee can be confirmed.
We've got a motion and a second by the Mayor Protim, all those in favor, please state aye.
We need a nominee for District Three on the Community Development Advisory Council, District Five on the Recreation Advisory Board, and District Six on the Community Development Advisory Council and the Recreation Advisory Board, other positions available are on the Airport Commission, we are waiting for three nominees to be submitted, on Circle, we still have two seats open, the Tree Board, Counselor Davis has a nominee. Thank you, sir, we'll bring this back at the next meeting, we are still waiting to hear back from Uptown Columbus for a representative on the Uptown Facade Board, and we are ready to see, receive nominations for the Personnel Review Board for the seat of Ms. Watson, and that's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Great, thank you, we have a request for an executive session on security plans, if I can get a motion? That's a motion and second, all those in favor, please state aye. Great, if you would, please clear the chambers, thank you.
All right, we are back on the air, we've just exited an executive session on security planning, and no votes were taken, I do want to remind you all before we leave this evening, as I think the community well knows, we lost one of our finest, Officer David Hall after over two decades of service with the Columbus City Government as a police officer with the Columbus Police Department, he was working with us on a contract basis with our Metro Narcotics Task Force, and in his retirement, he just retired in July of this year, he will be laid to rest at 2:00 P.M. Saturday, December 1st at Windbrook Baptist Church, of course, the community is, is invited, but if you can't make it, if you would, please keep his loved ones in your prayers and your thoughts, as you all probably read in the paper today, we also lost another young man who was in the helicopter as well, who's a member of our community, and was such a handsome and kind soul, and so please do keep the family in your thoughts and prayers as we go forward as a community, mourning those that were serving us, and, and had such bright futures ahead of them, so thank you all so much for the community outpouring, and, and let a police officer know you're thinking of them. With that, I'll entertain a, a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor, please state aye. All right, we'll see you on December 4th with a proclamation and business session, we're adjourned.